Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. I note that the hour has come and that a quorum of this council is present. City Council will now come to order. Asking for all members to please take your seats. Asking all visitors to please retire to the seats outside the rails. Before proceeding, I will ask all those present to please set your cell phones to silent and please take all sidebar conversations outside of the council chambers. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes the honorable, the outstanding, the inspiring, the empowering, the passionate, the compassionate Reverend Bonnie Camerada of the Salvation Army. She is here today as the guest of Councilmember Ketty Lazada. I will ask all members and guests to please rise.
As we start praying today, I want to leave you with a verse that this is the day that the Lord has made. And no matter what happened anywhere, we are going to rejoice and be glad because he is in our life. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with hearts full of gratitude for the opportunity to serve the great city and his people. We acknowledge your presence and seek your wisdom as we gather to discuss and make decisions that will impact the life of many. We ask you for your guidance over the leaders here today. Help them to act with integrity, compassion, and fairness, keeping the well-being of all citizens of Philadelphia at the forefront of their minds. May they have the strength to face challenges with courage and humility, to listen to different perspectives. We also recognize the diversity of faith, backgrounds, and belief in this chamber and across our city. In that spirit, we pray for unity, mutual respect, and a shared commitment to justice and peace. May we work together embracing our difference to build a city where everyone feels valued and heard. Let's today's session be productive and positive, fostering a future filled with hope, prosperity, and opportunity for all. In your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. The chair thanks the Reverend Council now be at ease. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September the 12th, 2024. The chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 12th, 2024 be approved.
It has been moved in propriety, second it, that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September the 12th of 2024 stand approved. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The chair thanks the Councilmember. The chair recognizes Minority Leader Brooks.
On behalf of the minority, there are no leaves or absence today. Thank you.
The chair thanks the Councilmember. The chair now recognizes Majority Leader Richardson for motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has been moved in propriety, second it, that the legislative matters stated by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion carries. The chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, we welcome you to our council session. We appreciate your taking the time to join us as we attend to the legislative matters of our city, and we certainly invite you to come again. I want to take a moment to acknowledge the illustrious ladies of Zeta Phi Beta who will be honored today. Can we give them a round of applause? I want to also take a moment to also welcome the strong men of Phi Beta Sigma Incorporated. We welcome them to City Council as well. We also have joining us today the Honorable State Representative Anthony Bellum. We thank you for coming to City Council today. We also have the Honorable Steve Kinsey, who will be being honored today. Thank you for joining us today in our chambers. And we also have the great pleasure and honor to have Ms. Erica Alexander, actress here today as well, who will also be honored. I don't geek out too many times, but that's Erica Alexander, y'all. Living single, y'all. If you know, you know, right? that's that culture. Those that know, know. At this time, the chair recognizes Councilmember from the mighty Fourth, Fifth Councilmatic District, Jeffrey J. Young, who presented a resolution naming Master Street between Broad Street and Carlisle as Erica Alexander Way. Would Erica Alexander and those accompanying her please join the Councilmember at the podium? Joining Councilmember Young will be the following Councilmembers: Councilmember Nina Maad, Councilmember Cindy Bass, Councilmember Ketty Lazada, Councilmember Kendra Brooks, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson, Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke, Councilmember Mark Squiller, Councilmember Anthony Phillips, Councilmember Jamie Gardiere, Councilmember Jim Harity, and Councilmember Rue Landau. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning to you all. I'm excited to be here today on this day because today we are honoring a living legend who was discovered here in our beloved city of Philadelphia, someone who deserves to have all the recognition, all the flowers, while she is still able to do even more great things in this society, in this world. I am honored and pleased to recognize today Erica Alexander. And so, we have a long resolution, so bear with us today, please, but she deserves to have all of her accolades, you know, in the world. So you all know the things that she has accomplished, the things she's going to continue to do, and the great things that we will predict that she would do in the future again. So I'm gonna start this ceremony off, but all of members of council are up here are also elated to join us in this ceremony. So, a resolution also naming Master Street between Broad Street and Carlisle Street as Erica Alexander Way.
Whereas Erica Alexander was born on November 19th, 1969, in Arizona, to Robert and Sammy Alexander, and moved to East Mount Airy, Eighth District, in northwest Philadelphia in 1983. And whereas Alexander joined the New Freedom Theater in North Philadelphia when she was 14 and was discovered by independent film company Merchant Ivory during the fifth week of a six-week summer acting class.
And whereas Alexander's first on-screen acting role was in a Merchant Ivory production, 1986 My Little Girl, a lead role she earned as 12 screen tests and four auditions. And whereas Alexander graduated from the Philadelphia High School for Girls in 1987 as a member of the 231st graduating class.
Whereas Alexander would go on to perform in plays at New York Public Theater throughout the 1980s, touring the world with the Royal Shakespeare Company in Peter Brook's groundbreaking play The Mahabharata when she was 17 years old. And whereas The Mahabharata opened the famed Majestic Theater in downtown Brooklyn, which is known to the world today as the Bam Harvey Theater.
Whereas Alexander would receive her big break in 1990 when she was cast as Pam Tucker in The Cosby Show, appearing... We can clap for that. Appearing on the highly acclaimed sitcom until the show's finale in 1992, that took her from Philadelphia to East New York, Brooklyn. And whereas Alexander would receive her breakout role in 1993, being cast as high-powered attorney Maxine Shaw on Fox's Living Single. A role for which she would receive multiple NAACP Image Awards for Outstanding Actress in a Comedy Series.
Whereas Alexander would portray Maxine Shaw for five years until 1998, her character serving as an inspiration for many black women attorneys, such leaders as Stacey Abrams, Rep. Ayanna Pressley, Joy Reid, and more. And whereas Color Farm Media discovered the Maxine Shaw Effect in a study showing one out of three black women lawyers surveyed saying that the Maxine Shaw character influenced their decision to attend law school with eight out of 10 black females professionals saying Maxine Shaw inspired them to pursue leadership in male-dominated professions.
Whereas Alexander's on-screen career includes numerous appearances and starring roles such as Selma Cotter in The Long Walk Home, Seal in '54, Detective Latoya in Get Out, Perenna in Black Lightning, Chantee in Déjà Vu, Yolanda in Insecure, Constance Irving in Bosch, Linda Diggs in Wu-Tang, An American Saga, and Barb Ballard in Run the World, for which she was nominated for the NAACP Image Award for Outstanding Guest Performance. And whereas Alexander's television career includes many guest-starring roles, spots on Law &amp; Order: Special Victims Unit, ER, CSI, Crime Scene Investigation, Criminal Minds, LAX, Seventh Heaven House, Suits, Grey's Anatomy, Last Man Standing, Swimming with Sharks, and a reprisal of her Maxine Shaw character on a 2005 episode of Half and Half.
And whereas in 2024, Alexander received numerous products for her role in Caroline Opposite Jeffrey Wright in a critically acclaimed American fiction, being nominated for an Independent Spirit Award and NAACP Image Award for Best Supporting Actress, as well as Screen Actors Guild Award for Outstanding Performance by a cast in a motion picture amongst a hall of nominations and awards the film would receive. And whereas Alexander's artistic work has extended beyond the big screen, co-authoring several comics and graphic novels, including the critically acclaimed Concrete Park and stepping behind the camera to co-direct PBS's The Big Payback in 2023, which served as Alexander's directorial debut.
Whereas The Big Payback was produced by Color Farm Media, an award-winning entertainment, innovation, and social impact venture Alexander cofounded with Ben Arnn in 2017 to bring diverse and underrepresented stories to the big screen. And whereas in 2020, Color Farm Media released their acclaimed documentary film titled John Lewis: Good Trouble, about the late congressman and civil rights icon that won an NAACP Image Award for Best Documentary and was nominated for three Emmy Awards.
All right. Whereas in 2022, Alexander served as the creator, writer, producer, and host of Color Farm Media's groundbreaking audio series Finding Tamika about missing black woman Tamika Huston. The series produced with Audible won the prestigious Dupont Columbia Award for Excellence in Journalism, was Audible's Best True Crime Series of the Year, and won a Webby Award. And whereas Color Farm's Social Impact Campaign for Finding Tamika in conjunction with the White House and with Howard University inspired national media projects and bolstered support for legislative and policy changes to combat Missing White Women Syndrome. The audio series changed how missing black women and people of color are seen and looked for and found nationally.
And I want to say I want to thank Jay for cutting this short because there was so much more to do. But whereas Color Farm Media also created educational curriculum based off the Maxine Shaw Effect in partnership with Microsoft, Discovery Education, Reconstruction, and Langston League to teach leadership and communication skills and influence attitudes and beliefs regarding career choices, emphasizing the role of representation in media and creating awareness of legal and leadership careers among middle school and high school students. And whereas Alexander's commitment to social impact has touched the political realm, as well as she was the most traveled surrogate for Hillary Clinton in 2008 and 2016 presidential campaigns to elect the first female U.S. president, which included serving as delicate from California and returning to her hometown of Philadelphia to deliver a speech in 2016 at the Democratic National Convention.
Whereas Alexander has actively campaigned for Stacey Abrams, Kamala Harris, John Lewis, and Joe Biden among many others at the local and national level. And whereas Alexander has testified before the U.S. House of Representative Judiciary Committee on the topic of diversity in America and media representation of people of color, joined Governor Stacey Abrams in Atlanta for a discussion with the Department of Education as part of the White House Initiative on Racial Equality, and has testified on panels in California and Washington, D.C. on the topic of reparations, the subject of her project, The Big Payback.
Alexander is a sought-after speaker as an expert on topics such as representation in media, power and entrepreneurship in media, women's empowerment, equity in education, mental health, inclusive storytelling for all genre and multi-platforms, and political surrogacy. Speaking at the 2023 American Federation of Teachers Conference on racial justice, the 2023 National Summit on Poverty, the Gina Davis Institute on Gender Representation, Essence Fest, and CBS for Diversity in Entertainment. And whereas Alexander is a critical thought leader on racial and gender equity, serving as a board member for one fair wage while remaining highly involved with social and racial justice organizations such as the Poor People's Campaign, Color of Change, NAACP, UNCF, Emily's List Creative Council, and is an advisor to Planned Parenthood.
That's what Girls High Girls do. We work. Whereas in recognition of her service to society, social justice, humanitarianism, and social science, Alexander joined the ranks of Dr. Maya Angelou, Felicia Rashad, Coretta Scott King, Susan Taylor, Ruby Dee, and Barbara Bush when she was awarded an honorary doctorate from Bennett College in 2023, where she served as the school's commencement speaker that year. And whereas in recognition of her service to society, social justice, humanitarianism, and social science, Alexander joined those ranks again and again.
Whereas that same year, her birthplace of Winslow, Arizona, renamed the street she grew up on as Erica Alexander Way in honor of her work and career achievements. And whereas Alexander has long been regarded not just as an actress, but as an activist, storyteller, Afrofuturist, humanitarian, entrepreneur, creator, director, and producer whose many talents and commitment to the betterment of humanity have made lasting marks on the arts for 40 years and counting. And...
So I'm bringing it home, right? This is, we finishing this up. But I just want to let you all know the greatness of Girls High Girls because this is what Girls High Girls can do. So all the girls that are in our city, everything that was mentioned in this resolution, this is something that you can do. This is something that you can become. This is why we renamed the street after her. So when you see her name, you see all the accolades, all the things she's accomplished, and you look up and say, I can do that too. So this is exactly why we want to do this in this city council. So whereas growing up in Philadelphia was a key component to the success of Alexander has gained throughout the years in entertainment, activism, leadership, and now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that Master Street between Broad Street and Carlisle Street shall be named as Erica Alexander Way. Yes. And be it further resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Erica Alexander as evidence of the true and sincere admiration and respect of this legislative body. Thank you so much for everything you've done.
The chair recognizes Erica Alexander for remarks.
I'm shaking, and I want to say thank you. I wouldn't be here without friends and family and mentors. So would like my brother, a Philadelphia police officer, to say a few remarks before I say some.
I won't take up too much of your time, but I would be a disservice if all this here wouldn't have happened if my mother, at the age of 14, didn't find her way here singing for the Marion Antlers Award. And we don't know what God has to store for us, but that was the start of finding a city, Philadelphia, which became our family's home base. And you guys have done nothing more but embrace my sister, my family, my daughter Sarai, who's part of a little big sister who sang here in these halls, and my wife Danielle, a native here, and my sister Carla. On behalf of them, I want to say thank you, Philadelphia. Thank you for embracing. Thank you for embracing us. Thank you for our family that had no home making Philadelphia our home. So, Cardinal Carter, who is my district representative of South Philadelphia, go South Philly, Johnson, excuse me, Johnson. I forgive you, Johnson, I'm sorry. I want to thank you all and everyone here once again. God bless you all, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm overwhelmed and I'm grateful. My thanks to Councilman Jeffrey Young Jr., his staff, Representative Malcolm Kenyatta for making this glorious moment possible, to New Freedom Theater founders, visionaries Johnny Allen Jr. and Robert Leslie, founders, and my teacher Johnny Hobbs Jr. who planted the seeds of storytelling and being human studies within me. Thank you. Every part I play is a love letter for your innovation and genius in arts and education. Thank you Philadelphia High School for Girls, Class of 231, and the Alumni Association for your support and giving me the tools I needed to take on the challenges and obstacles inherent to this life, knowing that she conquers who first conquers herself. Thank you to my partner and Color Farm co-founder Ben Arnon. Thank you so much, a true business mastermind and an innovative architect of a new generation of sustainable creators. And thank you to my family, John, a Philadelphia police officer, Carolyn, a Philadelphia social worker, Danielle, Philadelphia cardiac nurse and a community farmer, and my mother Sammy Alexander, who though retired now, served in Philadelphia as a social worker and educator for decades. My siblings, thank you. My Yishesh, Arlanda, Robert, Diane, my nephew Marlin, and my niece Sarai Solei Seoni, who created a festival for Philadelphia musicians to find them and elevate them. My greater family, the Watts family, Carla, who's here, who represents, whose achievements and legacy span decades and continue to build this community with integrity and honor. Thank you. I'm humbled, yet thrilled by this recognition from Philadelphia, a city that stands for freedom, independence, and the power to harness a new future by embracing a government made by and for the people. I'm a storyteller, and storytelling is fundamental to how we see ourselves in the world. We are in a storytelling chain all the time, and we ignore it to our detriment. Reverend William Barber of the Poor People's Campaign, my mentor, calls this period that we're in, the Third Reconstruction. And if that's true, then it's time to push beyond the boundaries that perpetuate white supremacy and tribalism and tell a better story and tell a greater truth. For a lot of people, it's undiscovered country, but not in Philadelphia, not for the city of broadly loves, who loves me back. And what that means also is now is the time to continue to rebuild America's foundation as it should have been since the First Reconstruction. You are all the architects of America, Philadelphia. You are the architects of the future. Thank you for building so much of your legacy in my DNA. I'll never forget this day, this amazing recognition of my Philly street Erica Alexander Way. And I promise you this, for all that I've been given, I will do my best to do everything I can to create a new universe of possibilities alongside you and for the people of Philadelphia, for our nation's humanity, and for our goodness sake. Thank you in grace and love. Be our guide. Thank you.
Counsel will be at ease.
...district to Arizona C. Stemmons Way. Arizona Cleaver Stemmons was the principal founder of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated and lived here in Philadelphia until March of nineteen eighty. She worked in the area of social work and gave back so much to our city, so Council President Johnson, we are forever grateful for that street renaming. Thank you also to our International President, Dr. Stacy N.C. Grant, to our Atlantic Regional Director, the Honorable Judge Beverly S. Tatham Esquire, to our State Director, Olivia B. Miller, and to all members of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated who are here today, including our State Social Action Coordinator, Josie Jones, we thank you and we welcome you. To our constitutionally-bound brothers of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, to our International President, the Honorable Brother Chris V. Ray J.D., to the Eastern Regional Director Nigel Quelo, and to our Pennsylvania State Director John Johnson, and to all brothers of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, we welcome you to Philadelphia City Council. I'd like to give a very special welcome and thank you, and a point of personal privilege to my partner in this work and in life, and the President of the Philadelphia Alumni Chapter of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, David R. Richardson, my husband, y'all. And with that, we are recognizing, honoring, and celebrating Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated on the occasion of Zeta Day at City Hall. And whereas the Philadelphia City Council traditionally recognizes significant contributions to our community, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated is one such contributor, and we are celebrating our Zeta Day at City Hall today, Thursday, September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. And whereas, on January sixteen, nineteen twenty, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority was founded on the campus of Howard University in Washington, D.C. by Arizona Cleaver Stemmons, Pearl Anna Neal, Myrtle Tyler Faithful Vol. Talagoans, and Fanny Petty Watts. And whereas, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority was founded on the simple belief that sorority elitism and socializing should not overshadow the real mission of progressive organizations to address societal mores and ills, prejudices, poverty, and health concerns of the day. And whereas, over the past one hundred and four years, members of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated have led countless initiatives addressing a variety of crucial issues, including voting rights, affordable healthcare, financial literacy, economic empowerment, and support for historically Black colleges and universities, political awareness and involvement, and... Whereas the ladies of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated have come to Philadelphia City Council as a part of our mission to be community-conscious and action-oriented. And whereas, one of the most important issues impacting Black women today is the disparity in maternal mortality. Black women have historically had the highest maternal mortality rates due to a combination of effects from institutional racism that have resulted in susceptibility to certain health conditions and lack of access to quality prenatal care. Members of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated have advocated for continued investments in improving maternal health outcomes just two weeks ago on Capitol Hill with almost a thousand members, and in state capitals across the United States of America, and now here today in the great city of Philadelphia. And whereas, one of the most important ways to achieve policy outcomes is to make your vote, your voice heard at the ballot box. The ladies of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated timed our advocacy at City Hall to align with National Voter Registration Day and to raise awareness about the importance of the upcoming election and to promote voter registration. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby recognize, honor, and congratulate Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated on the occasion of our Zeta Day at City Hall. And further resolve that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to representatives of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body. Thank you so much.
The Chair recognizes Josie Jones for remarks.
Good morning.
Morning.
What an amazing day to have a sea of world blue and white here at Philadelphia City Hall where sisterly love abounds. Thank you, Sora Gilmar Richardson, for being the number-one social action zeta and acknowledging our birth equity and maternal health work. Lastly, and certainly not least, thank you to our brothers of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated for being here today. Our organizations have remained steadfast in our commitment to the global mandate to elevate the bond between us and to serve our communities with zeal. Thank you.
I want to also take a moment of personal privilege to recognize your sister, the Honorable Archbishop Mary Floyd Palmer. First woman bishop, there it is. Is it okay?
To Mr. President. The Honorable Kenyatta Johnson, to this august body of whom many of you I know, love, and respect. Certainly, to my sister, Sora, our Madam Leader, Catherine Gilmar Richardson, to Mr. President, Mr. Richardson, and to my fellow Soras, what a wonderful day. The Bible says, "Be ye us already." Amen. And so I'm excited to be here. Ever since Zeta has embraced me, I have loved what it has stood for because it aligns with my own personal values and mission in life. And because of that, I'm proud to wear the color blue and white. For all of you that certainly are here to celebrate with us, we thank you. And to our sister or brother Greeks that may also be here, we thank you for your support. And we know that the D-9 is going to do a wonderful thing. And in this time where your voice is necessary, your voice is important, and it is mandated, let's raise our voice collectively so that we don't go back, but we do something. And then we'll see victory in the long time. May God bless you.
Counsel will be at ease. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips, who will present a resolution honoring and recognizing the Honorable Stephen Kinsey for his exceptional service and leadership as a member of the Pennsylvania House of Representatives from two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty-four. Elected to represent the two-hundred-first legislative district in the mighty northwest part of Philadelphia, Stephen Kinsey proudly served for six terms, demonstrating unwavering dedication to his constituents and community. With Representative Steve Kinsey and those accompanying him, please join the podium. Joining Councilmember Phillips will be Councilmember Nina Amay, Councilmember Cindy Bass, Councilmember Kendra Brooks, Councilmember Mike Driscoll, Councilmember Captain Gilmar Richardson, Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke, and Councilmember Mark Squiller.
Also any family or friends or support, supporters that are here today as well, staff. Well, Council President, they say that imitation is a form of flattery, and you're going to see why I did something, I'm about to do something that is a flattery to you, so thank you. So before I give some brief remarks, I would like to welcome Councilwoman Cindy Bass just to say a few words about Representative Stephen Kinsey of the Eighth District.
Good morning, everyone. So Steve, you know, he's like a brother. Get over here, get over here. You know, listen, Steve and I have had a long-storied history in politics in the Northwest section of Philadelphia. And the one thing I just really wanted to say is that, number one, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna miss you. You know, we're gonna miss your wit and humor and, you know, just, just general good disposition to be able to work with someone like Steve Kinsey. But I will say that I think, you know, sometimes people look at the work that we do, and we make it look easy, and it's not easy. And I think that that's something that I would say about Steve, is that he really made it look easy. And I know, like I said, as a, as a friend, as someone who's like, you know, a sibling to him, you know, I, you know, you know the highs and you know the lows. And so we're really gonna just miss you, and I wish you the very best in all of your future endeavors. And I know that you're, you've always been successful, so I know that you will be successful. But, you know, we're just really gonna miss you, so, all right. So we, so God bless and, you know, Godspeed in all of your future endeavors and whatever we can do to be helpful as a body, this council, you know, we love you, you know, great job, great job. And the one last thing I'll say really quickly is that Steve, I have a great appreciation for those who put in the work and then run for office. You know, Steve didn't just show up and say, "I'm running for office." Steve put in the work. He was a community activist, he was engaged, he knew the people on the ground. Everybody in Germantown knows, knows Steve, or is somehow connected to the Kinsey family. And so that's a testament of the work that he put in, not just in public service as a state representative, but in service to the community long before there was any title. So God bless you.
And before we go into the resolution, I just want to briefly say that, you know, we've heard it said that when someone shows you who they are, you believe them. And more often than not, this well-worn quote refers to people and the negative aspects of their personality and character. However, in this instance, the person at hand, retiring State Representative Stephen Kinsey, has shown us who he is, and we should believe him. He has shown us the highest virtues of untiring and integrous leadership. He has shown us what it means to be consistently present and remain present to make meaningful contributions to those whom he serves in the interests that best reflect their ambitions and hopes and dreams. Representative Kinsey has constantly and perpetually shown us who he is. As a champion of bipartisanship during politically and ideological diverse times, Representative Kinsey chose to co-found the Bipartisan Caucus in the State House, and he reached across the aisle when people retreated to their political concerns. He has showed us that not only who, who, he has shown us not only who he is, he has shown us who we should be. A product of Philadelphia Public Schools and the state system of higher education, Representative Kinsey has shown us that people produced in our neighborhoods and community can and do build fruitful lives, fight for the benefits of Medicaid and fair funding in public education, and stand in the gap. He has shown us who he is, but in retirement, God is not through with him yet. Now I hope and believe that God will show Representative Kinsey who he is. I pray and believe that God will give him the desires of his heart, that God will order his steps, make him prosper, and also find those things which indicate to Stephen that God is the God of the second and third and even fourth chances. Representative Stephen Kinsey, we have seen who you are, and we celebrate and salute you for a job well done. Good luck, God bless, and keep on keeping on. Enjoy the next phase of your life and continue to show us who you are. All right. All right. Now, for the beginning of our formal presentation, I just want to acknowledge that State Representative Rab's office is here, also State Representative-elect Andrea Carroll is here, and also State Representative Anthony Bellman is here as well in his honor. And we just want to say thank you all from the Northwest and for all that you have done. So, the man of the hour, honoring and recognizing the Honorable Stephen Kinsey for her exceptional service and leadership as a member of the Pennsylvania House of Representatives from two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty-four. Elected to represent the two-hundred-first legislative district, Stephen Kinsey proudly served for six terms, demonstrating unwavering dedication to his constituents and community.
Whereas, a resident of Northwest Philadelphia and a proud product of the Philadelphia Public School System, Stephen Kinsey holds a Bachelor of Science degree from Westchester University (okay, all right) and a Master's in Business Administration from Eastern University. His commitment to education and public service is deeply rooted in his own experiences and education, and...
Whereas, as a distinguished leader within the Democratic Caucus, Stephen Kinsey served as chairman of the Pennsylvania Legislative Black Caucus and was a founding co-chairman of the House Bipartisan Caucus.
To my esteemed former colleague. In two thousand twenty-three, he was appointed Majority Chairman of the Pennsylvania House Human Services Committee overseeing crucial services related to the medical, Medicaid system and the state's most vulnerable populations, and...
Got it, eh? Okay, not here. Okay. Oh, Nick is coming up now. Should I go? Okay, all right. All right, I'll read it. Whereas Stephen Kinsey's dedication to equitable education funding is notable, driven by his personal understanding of education's power to unlock opportunities. He worked tirelessly to ensure that all schools receive fair funding regardless of geographical location or zip code.
His advocacy extended to early childhood education, where he hosted rallies at the state capitol to support funding for children and workers in the childcare industry. And, in addition to his legislative achievements, Stephen Kinsey was appointed by former Governor Tom Wolfe as a trustee at Westchester University and selected by House Democratic Leadership for the Pennsylvania Minority Business Development Authority Board.
He is also co-founder of the Northwest Action Alliance, a grassroots community organization, and serves as the Vice President of Government Advocacy and Director of Community Engagement at Care Ring Health, and...
And whereas, Stephen Kinsey is the proud, proud father of Shaunessa, Lenessa, may she rest in peace, Juanessa, and Myla. He remains actively involved with local schools and community organizations throughout the Northwest Philadelphia area and is an active member of Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated, and I'm gonna add by way of Kappa Gamma Chapter, KG, which provides leadership training and mentoring to youth across Pennsylvania. Now therefore be it.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia, extends its deepest appreciation to the Honorable Stephen Kinsey for his remarkable contributions to public service and community leadership. His legacy of advocacy, dedication, and service continues to inspire and benefit the residents of Philadelphia beyond. Further resolve that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to the Honorable Stephen Kinsey as an expression of his, of the aberration and respect of this legislative
All right. So before we have Representative Stephen Kinsey give us some remarks, I don't think we have time for one more. All right, so we, real briefly, we're just gonna have Representative Anthony Bellman say thirty seconds of remarks, and then I'm gonna move on to Stephen Kinsey.
All right, I heard the assignment, I will be quick. To, I'll just say this, to the Honorable Stephen Kinsey, and a lot of times when people seek public office, they try to live up to the term honorable and to the adjective honorable. And Stephen Kinsey, you have absolutely done that in your tenure in the Pennsylvania House of Representatives. I want to thank you for, I've known Steve Kinsey for about ten years, and even when I first came into, to, to politics, he always had his door open, always was willing to teach the next generation. It never felt like you were, you were too, too high to reach back and touch very humble people. So thank you for your humbleness, thank you for your willingness to teach the next generation. Congratulations on your retirement, and I cannot wait to see what the next chapter has for you.
So, all right, so Northwest Philadelphia, all of the residents, the staff that you work with, community leaders that are here today are really proud and thankful for your amazing work. Public service is difficult and it's challenging, and you did it well with great enthusiasm. So on behalf of us, Philadelphia City Council, our office, and all of us in the Northwest, we want to say thank you to Representative Stephen Kinsey. We also have an award on behalf of our office and all the city council, just saying for your amazing work for the city of Philadelphia as well. So we want to present this to you to hang up in your retired office of public service.
Congratulations. The Chair recognizes the Honorable Stephen Kinsey for remarks.
Wow. Council President, Councilmembers, Councilmember Cindy Bass, Councilmember Anthony Phillips, I want to say thank you. You know, I had twelve great years serving in the State House, and, you know, when I reflect and look back, I want to say it again, twelve great years. You know, even when it rained, it was a great day. Sun was too hot, it was a great day. And I want to say that, you know, I had the privilege and the honor, but I also have to pay tribute to the folks that were before me because I was presented this opportunity by the people in the Northwest two-hundred-first legislative district, but also there were trailblazers ahead of me, folks like the late Honorable David P. Richardson. Folks like the late Honorable John Myers. And even a great lady who served in this very chamber is the Honorable Late Donna Reed Miller. They were leaders in the Northwest that I emulated, that, that I looked at and looked to for guidance and leadership. And, and folks, it's no easy task serving as a legislator. I mean, you here in this chamber, you know this as well, and had the pleasure to serve and work with many of you as we worked to get dollars sent right here to the city of Philadelphia. But we also know that those things don't happen simply by who we are or by our names, they happen because of the folks that are with us. And I want to thank my family, I want to thank my friends, and I would not be who I would, who I am today if it were not for the great staff that I had with me also. Some of them are here with me, I believe, I can't see behind me, but I'm gonna just take a guess. Donna Clement Jackson served as my chief of staff. I have Deborah Carter, who served as my legislative staff. I have Anthony Smith, who served as my legislative staff. I have Ahmir Davis, thought I forgot your name, Ahmir Davis, who served as my legislative staff, and Dana Garnett, who actually plucked out of the state office and is now with me working in healthcare. So, folks, we are only as good as the folks that we surround ourselves with, you know, that village that we talk about. I just want to say thank you to those of you that are here in city council because, again, at the state level, we can't really get it all done. You know, we think we can sometimes because, you know, we cover the state, but it takes that village. And City of Philadelphia, the city council, you're part of that village, and so I want to say thank you very much. It's truly an honor to be here today, to receive the recognition. Didn't want to be here, but I just want to say thank you for the acknowledgement, thank you for the work that you continue to do, and I look to be a part of that in some way, shape, or fashion. Thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Counsel will be at ease. Council will be at ease.[461.81]
93902, 3911, 3912, 3919, and 3926 Y Elusing Avenue in the 3rd Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a nonprivileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 844 Hutton Street in the 3rd Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a nonprivileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 3958 Parrish Street, 3939, 3972 Reno Street, 844 Hutton Street, and 855 North 43rd Street in the 3rd Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And an ordinance amending Section 12-701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes to authorize a bicycle lane on Woodland Avenue from Chester Avenue to South 42nd Street and make associated changes to parking regulations within the same limits, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Hadfield Street between South 54th Street and South 53rd Street, South 58th Street between Chestnut Street and Ludlow Street, Carpenter Street between South 60th Street and South 61st Street, Lindbergh Boulevard between Gray Street and South 54th Street, Ludlow Street between South 44th Street and South 43rd Street, South 59th Street between Market Street and Chestnut Street, Melville Street between King Sessing Avenue and Woodland Avenue, Chester Avenue between South 51st Street and St. Bernard Place, Rodman Street between South 58th Street and South 57th Street, Chancellor Street between South 53rd Street and South 52nd Street.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Sloan Street between Palton Avenue and Bering Street, Mount Vernon Street between North 37th Street and North 38th Street, North 42nd Street between Spring Garden Street and Brandywine Street, North 37th Street between Brandywine Street and Spring Garden Street, North 37th Street between Fairmount Avenue and Mount Vernon Street, Spring Garden Street between North 41st Street and North 42nd Street, Linwood Street between Arch Street and Ray Street, Sansom Street between South 59th Street and South 60th Street, Walla Street between North 34th Street and North 35th Street.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on North 42nd Street between Market Street and Palton Avenue, North 42nd Street between Palton Avenue and Bering Street, Brandywine Street between North 42nd Street and North 41st Street, Poplar Street between North 41st Street and Cambridge Street, Cambridge Street between North 40th Street and North 41st Street, North 34th Street between Fairmount Avenue and Walla Street, Manchewa Avenue between Fairmount Avenue and North 34th Street, Spru Street between South 63rd Street and South 62nd Street, Marco Street between Linmore Street and Woodland Avenue.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Apologize for the tardiness. But today, I'm looking to introduce one bill, one privileged resolution. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm introducing one bill, two resolutions, one nonprivileged resolution, and one resolution on your behalf, Council President.
Thank you. Would a clerk please read the bill and the privileged and nonprivileged resolutions, please?
An ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter relating to the creation of the Philadelphia Prison Community Oversight Board and authorizing the appropriate officers to publish notice and to make arrangements for the special election, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Cheney State College's 1982 Lady Wolves Women's Basketball Team on their induction into the Women's Basketball Hall of Fame.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating State Representative-elect Andre D. Carroll on the occasion of his special election victory in Pennsylvania House District 201.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar, and we welcome you to council chambers today, Representative-elect Andre Carroll. Thank you. Young man.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating State Representative-elect Keith Harris on the occasion of his special election victory in Pennsylvania House District 195.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
And a nonprivileged resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide for the creation of the Philadelphia Prison Community Oversight Board and the Office of Prison Oversight, and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I offer three bills, four privileged, and two nonprivileged resolutions.
Thank you. Would a clerk please read the bills and the privileged and nonprivileged resolutions?
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of North 50th Street and Winfield Avenue, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And an ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Conneroe Street between Lawton Street and Ridge Avenue, Lauriston Street between Salagnac Street and Ridge Avenue, Maris Street between Jeanette Street and Henry Avenue, Crescent Street between Dawson Street and Salinac Street, Terrace Street between Dawson Street and Salinac Street, Terrace Street between Roxborough Avenue and Lofty Street, Manor Street between East Street and Hermit Street, Jamestown Street between Manayunk Avenue and Terrace Street, Hermit Street between Terrace Street and Crescent Street, Lofty Street between Terrace Street and Boone Street.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And ordinance establishing a parking regulation on Brynmar Avenue between Parkside Avenue and Gainer Road, Overbrook Avenue between Lancaster Avenue and South 63rd Street, Robinson Street between Market Street and Arch Street, Robinson Street between Master Street and Havreford Avenue, Edgewood Street between Ray Street and Vine Street, Brynmar Avenue between Winfield Avenue and Gainer Road, South 62nd Street between Market Street and Arch Street, Dupont Street between Silverwood Street and Wild Street, Smick Street between Dupont and Green Lane, Manor Street between Hermit Street and Salinac Street.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And a nonprivileged resolution calling upon the Department of Prisons and the Office of Reentry Partnerships to work in collaboration with local resource providers to develop a distribution process of reentry resource packages for individuals released from incarceration.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings to investigate the level and effectiveness of community engagement and outreach initiatives carried out by higher education institutions in Philadelphia that directly impact adjacent neighborhoods.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on the Environment to hold hearings to determine the need for a conservation district to be enacted within Philadelphia County.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
And a nonprivileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 3148 North 24th Street, located in the 4th Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a nonprivileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 116 North 58th Street in the 4th Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a nonprivileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 138 North 58th Street, 6214 Vine Street, 3212 North 33rd Street in the 4th Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rulandau.
Good morning, Council President. Colleagues, I have two privileged resolutions today.
Would a clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution honoring the anniversary of the enactment of the repeal of Don't Ask, Don't Tell and the honorable service of countless LGBTQ+ veterans, and urging all veterans discharged due to this discriminatory policy to seek an upgraded discharge, enabling LGBTQ+ veterans and their families to enjoy all the benefits they have earned.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
And a privileged resolution recognizing the week of September 23rd through September 29th, 2024, as Diaper Need Awareness Week in Philadelphia, and acknowledging the outstanding efforts of community-based organizations working to ensure that all children have the essential items needed to thrive and survive.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Ketti Lizada.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I offer 11 privileged resolutions.
Would a clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution recognizing Clotilde Jimenez for his representation of the City of Philadelphia on the global stage as a commissioned artist for the 2024 Paris Olympic Games.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
A privileged resolution recognizing Argenas Figueroa for his career in media and service to Philadelphia Latinos' community, to Philadelphia's Latino community.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
Recognizing Geisha Torres for her career in media and service to Philadelphia's Latino community.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
Recognizing and honoring Deputy Commissioner Pedro R. Rosario as the first Latino officer to hold the position of Deputy Commissioner in the 226-year history of law enforcement in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
Recognizing David Pena for his career in Philadelphia's restaurant industry and Philadelphia's Latino community.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
Honoring and commending Dr. Jamil Talias Lieberman, Dr. PH/MPH, for her dedication to public health and service to the North Philadelphia community.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
Recognizing and honoring prominent public servants during Hispanic Heritage Month who contribute to the health and economic wellness of Philadelphians.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
Recognizing and honoring the Puerto Rican Day Parade on the occasion of its 60th anniversary within Philadelphia's Puerto Rican and Latino community.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
Recognizing and honoring remarkable Latino and Hispanic Philadelphia artists and journalists during Hispanic Heritage Month.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
Recognizing and honoring Nizza Waleska Sierra, community engagement teaching artist and studio coordinator at The Clay Studio.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
Recognizing and honoring Alba Martinez for her dedication to enhancing and uplifting the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I offer two bills and two resolutions, one privileged and one nonprivileged.
Thank you. Would a clerk please read the title of the two bills and privileged and nonprivileged resolutions?
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Wiley Street between Perkyomen Street and Cameron Street, Cecil B. Moore Avenue between North 29th Street and North 30th Street, Vineyard Street between Ridge Avenue and Leland Street, Vineyard Street between Leland Street and Poplar Street, Thompson Street between North 27th Street and North 26th Street, Dover Street between Oxford Avenue and Cecil B. Moore Avenue, Perkyomen Street between North Wiley Street and Vineyard Street, Master Street between North 20th Street and North 19th Street, Ingersoll Street between North 23rd Street and North 22nd Street, Ingersoll Street between 26th Street and Taney Street.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Richmond Street between Maribou Street and Columbia Avenue, Montgomery Avenue between Gerard Avenue and Wildly Street, Ogden Street between Camax Street and North 12th Street, Lithgow Street between George Street and Cambridge Street, 12th Street between Allegheny Street and Sedgley Avenue, Diamond Street between Marvin Street and North 11th Street, Valley Forge Place and Flora Street, cul-de-sac, North 19th Street between Montgomery Avenue and Burke Street, 8th Street between West Moreland Street and Ontario Street.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And a nonprivileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying titles to 2917, 2919, 2937, and 2939 Cecil B. Moore Avenue located in the 5th Councilmatic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act, whereas under Section 2109 of the Land Bank Act, 68 PACSA Section 2109D, Pren 3, a redevelopment authority with the consent of local governing body and without redevelopment contract may convey title to certain redevelopment authority property to a land bank.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a privileged resolution honoring the life and legacy of internationally renowned jazz legend Benny Golson.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Minority Leader Brooks.
Good morning, Council President. I have one privileged resolution to introduce today.
Thank you. Would a clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
Declaring September as National Sickle Cell Awareness Month, congratulating the Sickle Cell Disease Association of America, Philadelphia Delaware Valley Chapter in recognition of their 26th Annual Walter E. Brandon Sickle Cell 5K Walk Run Fundraiser, named in memory of the late Reverend Walter E. Brandon, and commending the work of researchers and medical health professionals working every day to fight sickle cell disease towards the ultimate goal of a universal cure.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Hardey.
Hello, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good afternoon, whatever it is now. I have two privileged resolutions.
Would a clerk please read the title of the two privileged resolutions?
Honoring and celebrating Jocelyn Wims, activist gospel singer and public servant on the occasion of her birthday.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
And a privileged resolution recognizing Local 692 for their victory in the 2024 Pennsylvania Pipe Trades Tournament.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill and one nonprivileged resolution today.
Would a clerk please read the title of the bill and the one privileged resolution?
And ordinance amending Chapter 9-800 Landlord and Tenant to Add Prohibitions and Penalties Related to Anti-Competitive Rental Practices, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And a nonprivileged resolution calling on the Pennsylvania General Assembly to pass legislation prohibiting the use and sale of software that use algorithms to anti-competitively set rental rates, fees, and occupancy levels.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Mr. President, no bills or resolutions today.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill today.
Would a clerk please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance authorizing the relocation of the curb lines of Watts Street from Hind Street to a point northwardly therefrom on City Plan Number 308, and the plotting on said city plan of an area for public pedestrian use extending along the westerly side of said Watts Street, and authorizing acceptance of the grant to the city of the said area for public pedestrian use, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution.
A nonprivileged resolution. It's okay. A nonprivileged resolution renaming the 6100 block of North 21st Street Reverend Kiotis Pryor Way to honor the life and contributions of Reverend Kiotis L. Pryor, the late trailblazing pastor of the Corinthian Baptist Church.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Amai.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have four privileged resolutions.
Would a clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution recognizing September 13th to the 27th, 2024, as Welcoming Week 2024 in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
Privileged resolution recognizing Philadelphia as the host city for the TED Democracy Fireside Chats, a pioneering event series from TED, and Visit Philadelphia that engages national thought leaders in critical discussions on the evolving role of democracy in our society, leading up to America's 250th anniversary.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
And a privileged resolution recognizing September 17th, 2024, as Mid-Autumn Festival, and celebrating the cultural and historical significance of Philadelphia's Chinatown.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar?
And a privileged resolution recognizing September 2024 as Infant Mortality Awareness Month, and highlighting the ongoing disparities in maternal and infant death in Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar? The next order of business is reports from committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Young for a report from the Committee on Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Streets and Services reports out of 10 bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Young. Would a chief clerk please read the report?
The Committee on Streets and Services, to which were referred the following bills: Bill Number 240578, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing 527 Whitby Mount Mariah LLC or a Subsequent Owner to Install, Own, and Maintain an Encroachment at 5217-5219 Whitby Avenue, Under Certain Terms and Conditions." And Bill Number 240611, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Installation, Ownership, Replacement, and Maintenance of Various Encroachments in the Vicinity of 615 North Broad Street, Philadelphia PA 19123, Under Certain Terms and Conditions." And Bill Number 240654, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Sidewalk Cafe in the Vicinity of 1320 Cotman Avenue, Philadelphia PA 19111, Under Certain Terms and Conditions." And Bill Number 240658, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Sidewalk Cafe in the Vicinity of 3527-31 Lancaster Avenue, Philadelphia PA 19104, Under Certain Terms and Conditions." And Bill Number 240659, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Sidewalk Cafe in the Vicinity of 3200 Chestnut Street, Philadelphia PA 19104, Under Certain Terms and Conditions." And Bill Number 240667, entitled "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 12-2700 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled 'Permit Parking Districts by Amending the Boundaries for Certain Permit Parking Districts, All Under Certain Terms and Conditions.'" And Bill Number 240668, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Sidewalk Cafe in the Vicinity of 1601 South 10th Street, Philadelphia PA 19148, Under Certain Terms and Conditions." And Bill Number 240669, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Marquee Canopy in the Vicinity of 2654 South Adler Street, Philadelphia PA 19148, Under Certain Terms and Conditions." And Bill Number 240673, entitled "An Ordinance Establishing Parking Regulations, One-Way Regulations, and the Designation of a Bicycle Lane in the Vicinity of Maplewood Avenue from Green Street to Wayne Avenue, All Under Certain Terms and Conditions," respectfully reports that it is considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation. And Bill Number 240670, entitled "An Ordinance Amending Section 12-701 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled 'Designation of Bicycle Lanes to Add a Bicycle Lane on South 3rd Street, All Under Certain Terms and Conditions," respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Streets and Services, Council President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Young for a motion?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading on this day of the bills just read and to the record by the chief clerk.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of the bills just read by the chief clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor, the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Driscoll for a report from the Committee on Licenses and Inspections.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Licenses and Inspections reports out two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Would a chief clerk please read the report?
The Committee on Licenses and Inspections, to which were referred the following bills: Bill Number 240304, entitled "Amending Title IV of the Philadelphia Code," entitled "An Ordinance Amending Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code, of Title IV of the Philadelphia Code, the Building Construction and Occupancy Code, to require proof of certain insurance certificates, all under certain terms and conditions." And Bill Number 240674, entitled "An Ordinance Rescinding Bill Number 240500 and Amending Title IX of the Philadelphia Code, entitled 'Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions, by Adding a New Chapter Creating Requirements Related to the Operation and Maintenance of Electric Vehicle Charging Stations Installed at Certain Commercial and Residential Partials, All Under Certain Terms and Conditions," respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report from the Committee on Licenses and Inspections, Council President.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Driscoll for a motion?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading of this day of Bill Number 240674 only.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the consideration of Bill Number 240674, just read by the chief clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries, and Bill Number 240674 will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Bill Number 240304 will be placed on the reading first, will be placed on the first reading calendar at our next session of council. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committees with the suspension of rules have been deemed to have been read on the first reading. These bills will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendar for our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 240751, 240752, 240754, 240757, 240760, 240764, 240766, 240768, 240769, 240770, 240771, 240772, 240773, and 240776. The following bills and resolutions on the calendar are being held: 240724, 240242, and 240427.
Thank you. Before considering these bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name to Ms. Hassan at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have signed up, you will be called in an order in which your name appears on a sign-up sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commissioners each will have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. Due to the volume of individuals participating today, the time limit will be one minute. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the one-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium when there are 30 seconds remaining to your time. The light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once one minute has passed, the light will turn red, and the sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not already done so. I also reserve the right, pursuant to our rules of council, to limit repetitious comments on the same subject matter. I would now ask the chief clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
Representative Andre Carroll. May Jamie Walker, Eric Tars, and Twila Nunez-Venney also make their way to the podium. Representative Andre Carroll.
Good morning, City Council. For the record, my name is Andre D. Carroll, and I am the State Representative-elect in Legislative House District 201. and I am the State Representative-elect in Legislative House District two oh one. First, I want to start by thanking Council President. I want to thank Philadelphia City Council. I also want to thank Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for this opportunity day.
Mr. Representative Carroll, could you just give me one second, if you don't mind? The chair recognizes Councilmember Katsy Lizada.
Thank you, Council President. My apologies, Rep. elect. I'd just like to excuse myself from session, and I'd like to be marked aye on all bills and resolutions.
Excuse us, granted. Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Representative-elect Andre Carroll. You can proceed, sir.
Thank you so much, Council President. Again, my name is Andre D. Carroll, State Representative-elect for House District two oh one. Again, I want to thank Philadelphia City Council. Thank you, Council President. And also thank you, Councilmember Isaiah Thomas, for this opportunity. I would also like to take the opportunity to congratulate my future colleague Keith Harris for also winning his special election last Tuesday, September seventeenth. I want to start by saying thirty-three years ago, there was a baby born to a mother who was battling with substance abuse and a father who would later go on to spend ninety-five percent of his life in prison. I was raised by my grandmother. And I want to give honor to my grandmother today because without her grace, I don't stand before you today with this opportunity. The journey to this moment has been long. It's been ten years, and it includes the opportunity to work in the Philadelphia City Controller's Office, also serving in the Senate or District Office of Anthony Hardy Williams. So I want to give great honor to Controller Rebecca Reinhardt and Alan Bucklevich for the opportunity to serve in their office. Before ever serving in office, I met a gentleman by the name of Isaiah Thomas, who at that point wasn't a city council member. He, in fact, at that time was, yes, an educator, a mentor, and a coach. And I want to thank him for this moment because it's his investment into young men all across the city that produces opportunities like this one. Also, I want to say that the best that America has to offer is what I keep in mind. As I embark on this journey as the next state representative, you know, I think about the things that unite us versus the things that divide us. Versus his investment in education, housing, or healthcare, we must understand that we are working in collaboration, and sometimes we will disagree. And that's absolutely fine. You know, I promise, as I embark on this journey, to give the best of my ability and the best that I can. On Monday, in Harrisburg, PA, I will be inaugurated as the second openly black gay man to serve in the House of Representatives in Pennsylvania. While I take this opportunity with great honor, it is above identity that I will have opportunity to serve in this position. I will get a chance to serve the great community members in Germantown, West Oakland, and Logan. So again, I want to yield back to Philadelphia City Council. I want to thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to serving with you all together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Twila Nunez Venio and Kenny Arpels Josiah.
My name is Jamie Walker, and I work in the community to get involved and make positive changes. I'm here to support the idea that housing is a basic human right and to talk about the problems with the recent sweeps in Kensington. These sweeps are cruel and don't solve the issues. People are homeless, mentally ill, or addicted to drugs, need help, not punishment. Locking them up is not the answer. A tragic example is Amanda Cahill, who died in jail after a Kensington sweep. Amanda was a kind, caring person who struggled with addiction. She had dreams and hopes like all of us. She was a mother, a daughter, a sister, and a friend. Her family has now left to mourn her loss, a loss that could have been prevented with proper care and support. She was arrested for drug possession and didn't get the medical care she needed. Our jails are not equipped to handle people going through withdrawal, and they are already short-staffed. Studies have shown these sweeps are not effective in the long term. For instance, after a sweep, the area might look clean for a short time, but often return, people often return because the root causes of homelessness are not addressed. Amanda's death shows that we need to change how we deal with addiction and mental health, and we should provide stable housing, medical care, and support service. Housing is a basic human right, and it's the first step to helping people recover and get back on their feet. These issues don't just affect individuals, they impact entire families, communities, when we fail to provide proper care and support. We tear families apart and create more suffering. We need to think about the children, parents, and loved ones who are affected by these policies. I urge council to focus on treating addiction and mental illness as issues, not crimes. Let's work together to make our city a place where everyone can live with dignity and help they need. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Eric Tars, and I serve as the Senior Policy Director at the National Homelessness Law Center, where I helped to organize the national support for Gloria Johnson and her fellow homeless plaintiffs in the Johnson versus Grant's pass case at the Supreme Court, and I'm also a proud Philadelphia resident. In short, despite widespread understanding that everybody needs a safe place to sleep, the Supreme Court, in a shameful ruling in the tradition of Plessy versus Ferguson and Coramatsu versus the United States, excluded homeless people from the Constitution's protections against cruel and unusual punishment, giving cities a green light to segregate this desperately black-and-brown LGBTQ+ and disabled population and ticket and arrest them for surviving outside, even if there's no safe indoor place for them to be. Councilmember Brooks' resolution makes clear: Throwing homeless people in jail or finding them makes homelessness worse, and just because cities can do this does not mean that they should. Council must pass this resolution as a first step to take a stand against the court's ruling, and then must continue to do the right thing and focus on housing, not handcuffs, services, not sweeps, as a proven solution to homelessness. Please support Resolution two four zero seven six four. Thank you.
We have Twila Nunez Venio. May Kenny Arpels Josiah, Kayden Hughjack, and Zamoria Brandon also make their way to the podium.
Hi, my name is Twila Nunez Bueno, and today I'm here to testify for Clara Hensley, who worked on Resolution number two four oh seven six six with Fridays for Future. She wasn't here, be able to be here today because of the rescheduling of the council session. I'm sure I don't need to stand here and explain to you all how catastrophic the climate crisis is becoming to everyone. We all know that, and yet we still aren't doing enough about it. We are still going in the wrong direction. As a student, a climate activist, and a seventeen-year-old, I'm terrified of my own future. Not because of college or choices ahead of me, but because of the inaction from governments and the generations before me. It's undeniable by science that coal, oil, and gas are all carbon bombs. All of these fossil-fuel-driven sources of energy are the root of the climate crisis, the root that is hurting and destroying communities right now, not in five, ten, twenty years, right now. Today on your agenda is a resolution endorsing the call for a fossil-fuel nonproliferation treaty, urging the federal government to support this initiative by centering, by entering into treaty discussions and committing the city to prioritizing a fair and equitable clean energy transition. Irreversible damage has been done, but we can still save the earth. We need to reach net-zero carbon emissions by two thousand and fifty, but this can't be done without holding fossil-fuel producers accountable. We need a just, equitable fossil-fuel phase-out, and we need it to start now. Clara worked heavily on creating and advocating for this, and she's sorry that she couldn't be here today. But regardless, please think of the young people in your life. That's all. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Kianu Arpels Josiah. I'm a nineteen-year-old climate justice organizer, and today I speak on behalf of Fridays for Future USA in support of Fridays for Future Philly and Councilmember O'Rourke's Resolution twenty four, two forty-seven six six in support of the Fossil-Fuel Nonproliferation Treaty. Last year, I was at the UN Climate Negotiations, known as the Conference of Parties, or COP, in Dubai. For twenty-eight years of negotiations, the COP had failed to even mention the words fossil fuels, responsible for ninety-two percent of our emissions. For twenty-eight years of negotiations, the COP failed to mention the very thing destroying our future, flooding our schools, bringing us deadly heat, and fastening and worsening deadly extreme weather, tearing apart our communities. For twenty-eight years, the Global South and island nations have demanded action, and for twenty-eight years, countries like ours and the global north have said no. In a world where forty-six point nine million people were displaced from the climate crisis just last year, in a country where we continue to be the largest expander of fossil-fuel infrastructure, in a region where our sky was orange from wildfire smoke just last June, and in a city where this past summer was the hottest in our history and yet the coolest one for the rest of our generation's lives, we must recognize the need for action. Our generation is screaming out for our future. The Global South and folks across the country are calling out for their survival. That's why it's so critical this resolution is on the calendar today. We must have a just, equitable, and immediate phase-out of fossil fuels to clean and community-driven renewable energy, and that must begin with stopping the expansion of new fossil-fuel infrastructure. That's what the Fossil-Fuel Nonproliferation Treaty is all about. It's what science nearly unanimously calls for. Okay, thank you. So we can't wait for Philly to join cities around the country in calling for this resolution.
Hi, my name is Kayden Hughjack, and I'm here to condemn the Supreme Court's decision to allow the criminalization of homelessness, and instead, I'm here to advocate that the city provide adequate services for these individuals instead of throwing them in an institution to be abused, neglected, and in some cases, have their lives taken. The city's inherent evil to attack our most vulnerable populations will only add additional trauma, resulting in the likelihood of reoffending. This will lead to even more homelessness on the streets, exactly the opposite of Sherrell's plan. It is apparent with these types of reactionary beliefs in play that the city officials do not consider homeless people, people below the poverty line, or substance abusers, as actual humans and are indeed to them indisposable. Take my cousin Amanda Cahill, for example, whose life was just taken due to these types of initiatives. Amanda was picked up on the Fourth of September sweep initiated by Sherrell Parker, and due to these inhumane decisions, they threw my cousin in a jail that was, in fact, not prepared for the influx of substance users and homeless people that they said they were prepared for. The streets of Kensington did not take my cousin. Actually, she survived them. The PDP and the staff at PICD, as well as Sherrell and her insistent need to attack the most vulnerable. Not only is throwing homeless individuals in jail inhumane, this led to the death of Amanda, which proves and wins the fight that myself and other harm reductionists have been trying to make. This doesn't work. If this is going to be the initiative, then maybe instead of deploying more officers in the streets of Kensington, the plan should be adequately staffing her jails, making sure that the medical professionals are on deck and correctional officers are properly educated on how to keep these people safe. Unfortunately, that wasn't the case with my cousin, but this is why I am here, to make sure that this doesn't happen to anyone else. Although it did, a week later, the victim's name was Michael McKinnis, another individual who was left unsupervised all night. The system learned nothing and failed yet another person. I, Kayden Hughjack, the cousin of Amanda Cahill, condemns Grant's Pass versus Johnson. The further we neglect to treat these people like human beings, the problems will only maximize until their death, which will more than likely happen due to resolutions like these being ignored. I, Kayden Hughjack, the cousin of Amanda Cahill, condemns the Grant's Pass versus Johnson, and I'm screaming justice for my cousin Amanda, who the PDP couldn't even bother to get a gurney for and dragged her out in a body bag, allegedly. Amanda, you deserved better, and I hope your death at least instills much-needed change and eradicates these god-awful beliefs before somebody else is in the bag next. Thank you.
We have Zamoria Brandon. May Sarah Pierre-Louis, Reya Elzin, and Kate Perez also make their way to the podium.
Greetings, Council President, President Kenyatta Johnson and other council members. My name is Reverend Zamoria Brandon. I serve as the Administrator Social Worker for the Philadelphia Delaware Valley Chapter of the Sickle Cell Disease Association of America, a community-based organization established over forty-two years ago to meet the needs across the lifespan for children, adolescents, adults, and families living with sickle cell disease through the following services: round-trip transportation, newborn screening follow-up, case management, supportive services and referrals, patient-parent support groups, multicultural initiative, advocacy support, single gene genetic counseling, and education. This morning, we offer our support of the Brooks honorary resolution introduced by Councilmember-at-large Kendra Brooks in recognition of our organization and her leadership, commitment, and advocacy, along with other council members who have supported our funding request over the past two years of one hundred thousand dollars. We appreciate your continued interest in the Sickle Cell Disease Association of America, Philadelphia Delaware Valley Chapter. However, in closing, it is our hope that this year's cultural fund will provide a funding opportunity for our agency to continue shining a light on sickle cell by building on our forty-two-year history of providing supportive services and honoring our mission of improving the quality of life across the lifespan for children, adolescents, adults, and families living with sickle cell disease and sickle cell trait. May it be so.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Pierre-Louis, and I'm the Community Health Worker for the Sickle Cell Disease Association, Philadelphia Delaware Valley Chapter. All right. So I'm the Community Health Worker for the Sickle Cell Disease Association of America, the Philadelphia Delaware Valley Chapter, and I'm also one of the people in the Philadelphia area living with sickle cell disease. The impact of sickle cell disease on an individual, as well as a family, can be devastating. And while many of you may know what sickle cell is, each experience is unique. As a child, this disease has kept me in the hospital, out of school, and affected my family who have always supported me. But what got me to where I am now is the help from my amazing support systems of medical professionals, social workers, camps, and organizations like this one. Now, as an adult, through this organization, I am able to assist with raising awareness, providing much-needed support services, such as transportation and financial services, as well as advocating for healthcare for those living with sickle cell disease. I thank you for all the support from the cultural funds that we've received in the past and for your much-appreciated support going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have Reya Elzin, Kate Perez, and may Teresa Duncan also make their way to the podium.
Hello? I have letters for council. I'm here to speak against amendments to Bill two four zero two four two. Business should not continue as usual during a genocide. We, the people of Philadelphia, we, the people of Philadelphia, stand against our country's complicity in Israel's ongoing genocide of Palestinians. We condemn our federal and state taxes funding the war machine while our own public schools are so under-resourced. We call on city council to pass a resolution for (1) an unconditional, permanent, and enforceable ceasefire in Gaza; (2) an immediate arms embargo of Israel; (3) divestment from Israeli companies and companies complicit with the occupation, like Energix; (4) protecting the rights of students, teachers, and workers of Philadelphia to speak against genocide and war crimes in Palestine, Sudan, Congo, Haiti, and elsewhere. Over the past year in Palestine, Israel has killed more than two hundred thousand people, detained ten thousand hostages, and eighty thousand people are missing. This week, Israeli airstrikes killed almost six hundred people in just one day. speak against genocide and war crimes in Palestine, Sudan, Congo, Haiti, and elsewhere. Over the past year in Palestine, Israel has killed more than 200,000 people, detained 10,000 hostages, and 80,000 people are missing. This week, Israeli airstrikes killed almost 600 people in just one day. In our city, weapons manufacturers Day &amp; Zimmerman, Leonardo, and Ghost Robotics are selling directly to Israeli forces. We, the people of Philadelphia, say enough of the war machine. It is morally imperative that the City Council pass a resolution calling for (1) an unconditional, permanent, and enforceable ceasefire in Gaza; (2) an immediate arms embargo against Israel; (3) divestment from Israeli companies and companies complicit with the occupation like Energix; (4) protecting the rights of students, teachers, and workers of Philadelphia to speak against genocide and war crimes in Palestine, Sudan, Congo, Haiti, and elsewhere. We are tired of watching our families get torn apart. There should be no business as usual during a genocide.
Would a clerk please call the next speaker?
May Kate Perez make their way to the podium? May Teresa Duncan and Amy Eusebio also make their way to the podium? Teresa Duncan and Amy Eusebio.
Ms. Perez, you can begin your speech, or do you want to defer to your team?
Cease fire now.
Please begin.
Cease fire now. Cease fire now. Cease fire now.
Please begin, Sarah. Your testimony?
Good morning, President Johnson and the illustrious City Council and citizens of Philadelphia. My name is Teresa Johnson Duncan. I'm the Director of the Center for Leadership Development and Advocacy, and I'm representing one of our signature programs today, the Fresh Bottoms Diaper Bank. Diaper Bank is defined as the lack of a sufficient supply of diapers to keep an infant or child clean, dry, and healthy, and in Philadelphia, many families struggle for this basic necessity. Diapers are not covered by any federal assistance program such as SNAP, TANF, or WIC, and many daycare agencies require parents to provide diapers for their children. Some children with disabilities never outgrow the need for diapers. The consequences of diaper need are far-reaching without an adequate supply. Severe diaper rashes and infections could require a parent to take a child to the emergency room over and over again. Parents may miss work or even school because they cannot leave their children at a daycare. This creates a cycle of economic hardship and stress for families who are already facing financial challenges. During this week, I urge you to consider helping Fresh Bottoms and other diaper banks. We are being featured at the PICO Crown Lights tonight, the 28th and the 29th, and we look for your support. Fresh Bottoms has been helping many of the council people here. We thank you for your support. We will show your baby showers, and we are available for you. Remember, a clean diaper builds character. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kate Perez, 240247. We know of three weapons manufacturers in your districts. Nonconformities means that these businesses no longer comply with city standards. Our conventional arms transfer policies state that the United States cannot transfer weapons when it's more likely than not to be used in violations of the Geneva Conventions or other severe human rights violations, of which Israel has already been found guilty of multiple in the International Court of Justice, and especially considering their recent escalations in Lebanon, Yemen, Iraq, and Syria. Companies in our city that continue to sell weapons to the Israeli occupation violate the Foreign Assistant Act of 1961 and the Arms Export Control Act. U.S. soldiers are now in the ground to evacuate in Lebanon as Israel aims for a regional war. You can pass a resolution calling on Congress to support the Sanders Joint Resolutions of Disapproval to halt this next wave of arms sales to Israel. Our nonconformities are detrimental to the city. Pending an end to Israel's occupation, third states must immediately stop all forms of aid or assistance that help maintain the unlawful occupation, including halting arms transfers and ceasing all trade with illegal settlements. We want an arms transfer. We want a ceasefire. Free Palestine.
Amy Eusebio, May Rashid Millage, Paul Birdsong, and Kareem Price also make their way to the podium?
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name is Amy Eusebio, and I serve as the Executive Director of the City of Philadelphia Office of Immigrant Affairs. I am here today to comment in favor of the Welcoming Week Resolution introduced by Councilmember Nina Ahmed, and I want to just share a little bit. For those who don't know, the Office of Immigrant Affairs, we are a permanent city office with the mission to promote the well-being of immigrants, refugees, and asylees in the city of Philadelphia, and we do this by promoting policies and programs that facilitate their successful inclusion into the city's civic, economic, and cultural life. And so today, I am here to celebrate our 12th Annual Welcoming Week, and it is part of a national program initiative led by a nonprofit called Welcoming America that really has a goal of creating a sense of belonging and inclusion for all of our city's residents, including the foreign-born. Just want to comment briefly on some of the featured events over the last couple of weeks, including an art exhibit at the Free Library called Belonging that's on display until October 1st, several flag-raising ceremonies, a job fair yesterday, many wonderful events. And so I just want to thank the support of the City Council for supporting immigrants, refugees, and asylees in the city of Philadelphia and for celebrating Welcoming Week. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Rashid Millage, Paul Birdsong, Kareem Price, and John Geeding also make their way to the podium?
My name is Paul Birdsong. In reference to Resolution 240724 regarding merchants facilitating illegal activities that negatively impact our communities, I'm puzzled as to how the law enforcement community in Philly, who due to an archaic forensics lab, poor community support, and unused or inoperable cameras citywide, who under the direction, yet without the support of Mayor Sherrell Parker, who can't tackle larger tasks such as the overwhelming epidemic of gun violence accompanied by 2,000-plus unsolved murder cases, plans on or has the resources to take on this task. City Council, you have given Mayor Sherrell Parker all the support she needs to give us community support. You've given her all the support she needs to give us cameras and a forensics lab. We no longer look to you for the solution, rather camaraderie and putting pressure on our mayor to prioritize Philadelphia's safety, and until she does, every victim who possibly could have been prevented by a decision that is on her to make is on her hands. I repeat, their blood is on her hands. Also, President Kenyatta Johnson, just a question, and you ain't got to answer me straight up right here, but I've noticed that there is a lot more priority in putting time on all the ceremonial things than the ability of the public to come testify. I wonder why that is when this whole thing is about making this city a better city for these people? All power to the people.
Kareem Price, John Geeding, Andrea Rogers, Victoria King make their way to the podium?
My name is Andrea Rogers, and I serve as Executive Director for Starfinder Foundation. I'm supportive Councilmember Rue Landau's Resolution 240757, calling on the school district to expand SEPTA's student fair passes to all students for usage at all times regardless of the residential distance from schools. So Starfinder, my organization, is a sports-based youth development organization that engages youth in health and physical fitness, social-emotional wellness, and an ability to focus on the future for neighborhoods all over Philadelphia. So we see about kids from over 50 schools in the city, and we engage them through deprogrammed supportive mentorship and a tight-knit community, and our foundational belief is that all youth deserve to learn, grow, and thrive. So while we serve pre-K through high school, our key program is our high school program, which is an after-school and summertime program, that they come to us, and we know that students that participate in after-school and weekend and summer programs are less likely to engage in risky behaviors, engage in adverse relationships, interpersonal relationships, and they have the ability to succeed. So among so many other barriers in the city that limit opportunity for youth to optimize their potential, a key barrier that is prohibitive are the costs of transportation or difficulty navigating transportation within a limited set of rules. I am hopeful that this measure will help lift that barrier for youth and their families and lead to increased access to opportunities that will empower young people and allow them to explore their talents and promote increasing their options in the future. Thank you, Councilmember Landau, and thank you to your colleagues. I look forward to seeing this resolution pass.
You're welcome.
Victoria King, Connor Deschamaker, Simbolai, Mashari Dunbar?
Hello there. My name is Connor Deschamaker. I am the Coalition Member for Transit Forward Philadelphia, speaking in support of Councilmember Landau's Resolution 240757. I've got printed letters from two folks who could not be here today, Rebecca Fabiano from FabU Philly, as well as student Ayumi Long. I want to thank several members of council, Councilmember Phillips and staff, Councilmember Landau in particular, Molly, Councilmember O'Rourke and Staff Member Cade, Councilmember Brooks and Staff Member Eric, Councilmember Thomas and Staff Member Ben. We're all here in support of expanding student fairs because this is putting us in alignment with cities across the country, including most recently New York, who are expanding transportation access for youth. We have received some digital support. This is a no-brainer for enhanced independence, improved connection to community, and youth engagement, more ridership for SEPTA, and support for our youth and families. This is an incredible opportunity, and I'm really excited to see the momentum for this. Let's get it funded, and let's get it implemented. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Simbolai. I'm testifying today in support of the resolution authorizing a joint hearing on the use of electronic monitoring for GPS for youth involved in Philadelphia's juvenile justice system. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilmember Phillips and Councilmember Landau for introducing this resolution. We and many of our partners have been working on this problem for years, so thank you very much. Philadelphia has seen an overall decrease in the spending on youth involved in the criminal justice system and a decrease in overall numbers of youth incarceration since 2016. At the same time, we've seen an increase in reliance on electronic monitoring. In FY 2017, we had 1,500 youth on GPS surveillance. In FY 2023, we have around 1,700. More and more, the city has used GPS as an alternative to youth detention. While we may think that GPS is better than being confined, we've heard stories from young people challenging that assumption. So youth tell us about how they can't go to their programs and job trainings or therapy sessions that are court-mandated because they risk violations. We've heard of youth getting violations because they stopped off at a store to get a sandwich and they stay there too long. We've heard stories about youth who can't, in the middle of summer, sit out on their porch because if they do, they're going to get a violation, so they sit at home and they bake. So these stories and the fact that the cost of using monitoring and maintaining the GPS system is increasing are reasons why we find that the hearing is very, very important. We want to know what we're doing, why we're doing it, and whether or not this tool has its intended effect. So again, we've been working alongside partners of this problem for years. We hope that these hearings uplift the experiences of young people who have gone through GPS monitoring so that Philadelphia can develop a better, more holistic, more rehabilitative strategy for youth. Thank you for your time.
Mashari Dunbar, may Michael Felker, Michelle Smith, and Sterling Johnson also make their way to the podium?
Good afternoon, Council President, ranking members, and esteemed members of the council. My name is Mashari Dunbar. I'm a retired Air Force combat veteran and out lesbian who served during Don't Ask, Don't Tell. I'm here today as a member of the Board of Directors representing the Veterans Multi-Service Center, known as VMC, an organization proudly supporting veterans of all backgrounds and experiences, including those like myself who faced discrimination during their military service due to the now-repealed Don't Ask, Don't Tell policy. First and foremost, we want to thank Councilmember Rue Landau for introducing this resolution, which honors the anniversary of the repeal of Don't Ask, Don't Tell. It acknowledges the immense sacrifices made by LGBTQ+ veterans. For too long, the bad paper discharge is given to over 13,000 service members between 1994 and 2011 have blocked them from basic resources like VA health care, home loan guarantees, education benefits, all critical components of successful transition from military service. At the VMC, we see firsthand the impact of these denials, creating challenges due to mental health and physical health conditions, housing insecurity, and a lack of access to essential support services. These challenges are compounded for LGBTQ+ veterans who suffered additional mental, emotional, and systemic trauma simply for being ourselves. Most of those discharged under Don't Ask, Don't Tell still have not come forward to seek their earned benefits and discharge upgrades. Supporting this resolution, honoring the repeal of Don't Ask, Don't Tell, makes a declarative statement that says, "We see you, we honor you, we support you." Philadelphia can be a leader in ensuring that every LGBTQ+ veteran in our community feels welcome and is aware of the steps that they can take to restore their benefits. VMC is committed to working alongside the city to make this happen. We ask this council to continue standing with LGBTQ+ veterans, not just in words, but in action. Pass this resolution, and let's work together to ensure that their service is honored and that the injustices of the past do not define their future. Thank you.
Council President and Councilmembers, my name is Michael Smith. I am the Executive Director of Cradles to Crayons Philadelphia. Thank you for hearing me today. Cradles to Crayons is the largest national nonprofit with children's clothing insecurity at the core of our mission. There are no federal and few state-based programs that cover these essential, critical items like shoes, coats, and clothing. Cradles to Crayons closes those gaps that three in five children in greater Philadelphia face by providing packages of clothing and essential items to kids living in low-income and homeless situations. Since we opened our doors here in 2006, we've provided 1.5 million packages of clothing and essentials to kids in the region by helping 200 human services agencies in Philadelphia. This year, we'll distribute 300,000 packages, but the reason I'm here today is to talk about diaper need. One in two families in Philadelphia face diaper need annually. When families go without an adequate supply of diapers, they risk diaper rashes and infection, and it's really critical that we fund this. More importantly, when a family doesn't have diapers, they don't go to work and miss an average of 5.1 days of work a month. That's why we've provided 8 million diapers in America and 3 million diapers here in Philadelphia, and today, we're distributing 780,000 out of East Falls Giving Factory Warehouse today. Factory Warehouse today. Thank you for your help with this. Thank you for the recognition of National Diaper Needs Awareness Week, and thank you, Councilwoman Ruth Landau, for supporting this today. Diaper need is vital for kids in our region. Please help us. Thank you.
Sterling Johnson, Byron Golson, Lynn Landis, and Jeremy Blattstein also make their way to the podium?
Okay. My name is Mike Felker. I want to thank Councilmember Landau for her resolution on the repeal of Don't Ask, Don't Tell and recognition of LGBTQ+ veterans. I was a U.S. Navy Hospital Corpsman who served as a combat medic with the Marines in Vietnam in 1970. It is important that my fellow gay veterans, we who have served and sacrificed for our country, be given access to the benefits they have earned and deserve, including VA medical care, home loans, and the GI Bill. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Sterling Johnson from... Hello. My name is Sterling Johnson from Philadelphia Community Land Trust and Philadelphia Housing Action. I'm here to support Councilperson Brooks' Resolution 240764 condemning the grant's passed decision from the Supreme Court. You know, first, I don't want to forget this, like, the reason that we're here is to support families, mostly Black and Latin x families, and my organizing, going to shout out Justice for the Mitchell Children, which comes from the experience of Janie Mitchell, which is one of our organizers here with us. We're finding to keep people together with more criminalization. The way that the systems talk to each other makes it impossible for housing to happen, makes it impossible for jobs to happen. I don't understand how you expect people with a criminal record to have equal access to jobs and housing. And what we must stop is the dehumanization of people. The fact that Senator in the center of Pennsylvania would deny organizations in Kensington $7.5 million because he did not know that kids lived in Kensington is the result of the constant dehumanization, the videos, the slander, the statements made wildly without centering the actual people and actual families that live in Kensington. We have to stop it. The fact that he doesn't know that and that he says, "No, you don't deserve afternoon, after-school activities, a soccer program." If we understand the need to come together, actually hold, you know, actually, this did happen, right? This has happened in our city. And even as recent as 2019, I will say, Councilwoman Blackwell brought a lot of people together and said, "We're going to make sure that hospitals are going to be held accountable for the people that end up on the street." And, you know, you know, we're going to have a long conversation, it's going to end now, but, you know, the thing, I'm disabled, the thing that I cannot stand is when I see people that should be taking given care. Healthcare, healthcare is a syringe's healthcare. To be in a hospital and receive care and pain management and withdrawal management is healthcare. That's all it is. They should not be on the street, and the hospitals have to be held accountable. Thank you for your time.
Byron Golson, Lynn Landis, Jeremy Blattstein, and Noah Forer also make their way to the podium?
Good morning. Good morning, Council President Johnson and members of City Council. I am Byron Golson, and I am here to support the resolution honoring my cousin, jazz composer, tenor saxophone musician, arranger Benny Golson, who died this week at 95, introduced by Councilmember Jeff Young. The last time I stood here, I was representing Settlement Music School. My twin brother and I are musicians because of Benny. And this is a full-circle moment because 10 years ago, Jeff Young drafted a resolution on behalf of his boss, then-President Clark, to honor Benny, who was in these chambers for the first time in his life. He marveled at the elegance of this room, and as I recall, Councilman Young's father was a Benny fan as well. On the same day in 2014, Mayor Nutter honored Benny in the mayor's reception room, and Vince interviewed him for WURD. Benny was born and raised in North Philadelphia, graduated from Benjamin Franklin High School. Some of his accomplishments were, he composed several jazz standards such as Killer Joe, Whisper Not, I Remember Clifford, and Blues March. And he was a very, very deep influence on my life as I became a musician, following in his footsteps. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I'm Lynn Landis of SafeStreetsPhilly.org. I support the resolution to strengthen enforcement against illegal activity in certain stores. But the city needs more. We need our laws fully enforced across the board. To that end, I ask City Council to urge the mayor to announce the new forensic lab as soon as possible. As to last Saturday night's mayhem in Center City, there's no surprise there. The mayor and City Council need to restore summary arrests and community court throughout the city, not just for Kensington. In violation of both local and state laws, the city is still not fully enforcing the law in every part of the city. And in violation of federal law, Philadelphia is still a sanctuary city for illegal immigration. We are sending a dangerously mixed message. We must enforce the law across the board for effective and equal justice. Even with a new forensic lab, there is no magic bullet when it comes to public safety. From retail theft to wanton murder, from broken windows to open borders, everything matters. Thank you.
Jeremy Blattstein, Noah Forer, Sultan Smalley, and David Gibson make your way to the podium, please.
Hello, President Johnson, City Council. I'm talking about SEPTA today. You know what the question is. Raise your... My name is Jeremy Blattstein. I'm sorry for that. Who rode SEPTA to City Hall this morning? Oh, zero. Come on. Come on. The quality of life issues surrounding City Hall, you saw it on Saturday night, and you see it on a daily basis, but I really would encourage you to ride SEPTA to City Hall. I think that it really will be eye-opening to see the issues that your constituents face on a daily basis. And it really is another opportunity, also what's been spoken on today regarding homelessness, and how that impact around the quality of life around City Hall. Love Park and the surrounding area has progressively gotten worse over the last six to 12 months. The study that came out this past week reflected that. So as we talk about housing and homelessness, I would just encourage each and every one of you to really see that firsthand and ride SEPTA. So my challenge to you, I said it last week, I'm going to say, I'm going to ask it every week, ride SEPTA on Thursdays and really show, ride the ride and put some oomph behind it. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Noah Zohar Forer. I'm a 19-year-old environmental activist, and I co-founded the Philadelphia chapter of Fridays for Future at 16 years old. Thank you, City Councilmembers, who sponsored the Fossil Fuel Nonproliferation Treaty and supporting ending new fossil fuel expansion. However, words can only be the first step. I want you to react to the global climate crisis the same way you guys reacted to the global pandemic in 2022. We changed the way we were going about our daily lives and the way our systems operated in order to ensure our chances of survival. I want you to think about how many of you need air, food, and water to survive. Hoping that's all of us. I want you to think about how many people around the world do not have access to all these resources. I'll let you know how many people. 2.2 billion. 17% to 20% of the Amazon rainforest has already been destroyed, and its irreversible tipping point is reached when 20% to 25% has been cut down. When I graduated from high school in 2023, we were congratulated by being engulfed in a thick, heavy smoke greeted from the wildfires in Canada. Climate change is here. Climate change is now. Margaret Mead, a revolutionary American anthropologist, said, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed individuals can change the world. In fact, it is the only thing that ever has." I would like to give every single person in this room today, every individual, five things that they can start doing today to reduce their impact on the planet. One, educate yourself and your friends and your family on climate change. Talk about it. Two, reduce the amount of food and plastic we are wasting. We don't need to buy more than we consume. Three, reduce the amount of resources that you are throwing away. It's okay to share. We can be a community. We can reuse clothes. We can reuse plastic. Four, lower that thermometer. If you want to put the AC on 70, bump it down to 69 instead. It's okay, sorry, I meant heating. It's okay to have it lower than what you need. It saves energy. And five, use public transit more or bike. It will help the transit system become more accessible to everyone, and that is something we need. It does not matter what your political stance, religion, background, or education is. Climate change is a threat that is impacting every single one of us right now, and it is not going to disappear by ignoring it. As a community, it is our responsibility to do every single thing we can to take the steps necessary to pave the path to a sustainable, livable future. Do it for me, do it for your kids, and do it for the kids to come. Please. Thank you.
Hello. Hello. My name is Sultan Smalley. I'm a student at the Community College of Philadelphia and a member of the Sunrise Movement. I am here to support the passage of the Fossil Fuel Nonproliferation Treaty Resolution. The Philadelphia youth deserve the ability to imagine their futures with equanimity, not fear. We cannot afford to act slowly in our ongoing climate crisis. The time to act is today. Billionaires and big corporations have for too long been allowed to exacerbate the warming of our planet with impunity. Today's City Council has the opportunity to help ameliorate the decades of inaction from our government. This is an existential threat, and let's not forget who bears the brunt of this. It's the working-class Black and Brown communities, like the citizens near the Bellwether District who reported higher levels of cancer while an oil refinery operated near their homes and dealt with the consequences of the same refinery exploding in 2019, releasing hydrochloric acid in the atmosphere. Furthermore, Philadelphia has a child asthma rate three times the national average, but the risk is unequal. The majority Black neighborhood of West Philadelphia, where I grew up in Cobbs Creek, has some of the city's highest asthma hospitalization rates. This is to say that passing this treaty is not just climate justice issue, it is a racial justice issue, is an economic justice issue, and we must acknowledge the conundrum between all these different issues in order to tackle the climate crisis with the level of seriousness it warrants. We stand at an inflection point, and I often feel deflated because I don't see enough action. But in times like this, I remember that there are decades where nothing happened and days where decades happened. So please make this day worth a decade. Thank you.
David Gibson, Mayo Bona Hagens, and Wanda Walker also make their way to the podium?
I'm David Gibson. I'm representing members of Peace, Justice, Sustainability Now, which is the associate group of peace action, the nation's oldest secular peace group since 1957. I'm also representing the Philadelphia Area No More War Coalition, speaking in favor of the resolution for a fossil fuel treaty. Thank you for allowing me time to speak. As everyone should know by now, we all face two existential threats to humanity's survival: the spread and potential use of nuclear weapons and the growing climate emergency. On introduction to the Fossil Fuel Treaty website page, it says, "Just like 50 years ago, when the world used international treaties to defuse the threats posed by nuclear weapons, today the world needs a fossil fuel nonproliferation treaty to phase out fossil fuels, support dependent economies, workers, and communities, and to diversify away from fossil fuels." In 2019, City Council passed a resolution encouraging the U.S. to support the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons, or the TPNW. Over the years, we reduced the nuclear threat from 70,000 warheads to around 12,000 today, but new nuclear weapons are being planned by all nuclear countries, though they are illegal according to the TPNW. We must continue to work to abolish nuclear weapons, and we know it's possible. But we will do little good if we keep the world from frying in a nuclear firestorm to let it slowly fry thanks to the current climate emergency, like the proverbial frog in the pot. It's time to take action and compel governments to end fossil fuels. Let's take a step by passing this resolution. Thank you. One last point. Democracy takes time. A minute isn't enough. Thank you.
Yeah. Great afternoon. Obona Hagens, fourth-generation chattel slavery survivor. Councilmembers, while I applaud the formation of the Special Committee on Kensington, I cannot ignore the hypocrisy staring us in the face. We rush to address issues in Kensington, but where is the same urgency when it comes to the progeny of the emancipated, the American freedmen? Let's talk about the elephant in the room. We have offices for the Caribbean and for various other immigrant groups. Where is the office of the American freedmen, the progeny of the emancipated? How can there be offices for everybody else in this building? But the people who saved this nation, the people who built this nation, doesn't have an office in this building. I demand that immediately, I talked to my man right here, Councilman Harity, who has met with us. You guys got to meet. We got to have an office of American freedmen within this building, the first one in the history. Obona Hagens, unseated Council President, American freedman, and a fourth-generation chattel slavery survivor.
Wanda Walker? There are no further names, Council President.
Thank everyone for their testimony today. That concludes today's public comment period. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on a second reading and final passage calendars. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240751?
A resolution renaming Stanton Avenue and Washington Lane to Isabella Fitzgerald Way to honor her significant impact on the community introduced by Councilmember Phillips.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240751.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded. The Resolution Number 240751 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240752?
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 519 North Comack Street in the Ninth Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code introduced by Councilmember Phillips.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240752.
Thank you, Council President Johnson. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded. The Resolution Number 240752 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240754?
A resolution renaming the 5800 block of Oxford Street Fred Rosenfeld Way to honor and celebrate the life and legacy of Frederick C. Rosenfeld for his outstanding contributions to youth sports in Philadelphia introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240754.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It has been moved and property seconded. The Resolution Number 240754 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Will the clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240757?
A resolution calling on the school district of Philadelphia to expand SEPTA's student fare passes to all students for usage at all times regardless of their residential distance from schools introduced by Council- introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Landau for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240757.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that Resolution Number 240757 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240760?
A resolution authorizing the Special Committee on Kensington to convene and explore best practices in substance use disorder outreach and to investigate the effectiveness of current methods used by the City of Philadelphia and its partners, introduced by Councilmember Lozada.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Captain Gilmore Richardson for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240760.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Lozada, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that Resolution Number 240760 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 7407240764?
A resolution condemning the Supreme Court's decision to allow the criminalization of homelessness in Grants Pass versus Johnson and reaffirming the City of Philadelphia's commitment to housing as a human right introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240764.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that Resolution Number 240764 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240766?
A resolution affirming the City of Philadelphia's ongoing commitment to the goals of the Paris Climate Agreement, endorsing the call for a fossil fuel nonproliferation treaty, urging the federal government to support this initiative by entering into treaty discussions, and committing the city to prioritizing a fair and equitable clean energy transition introduced by Councilmember O'Rourke.
The chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240766.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the passage of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that Resolution Number 240766 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240768?
A resolution calling on the Pennsylvania State Senate to pass House Bill twelve eighty-three Susan and Emily's Law to empower municipalities to create parking-protected bike lanes on state-owned roads introduced by Councilmember Brooks. I mean, Councilmember O'Rourke, I'm sorry.
The chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240768.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that Resolution Number 240768 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. The chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Council President, I have to leave out unofficial council business. Can I please be marked as aye on all bills and resolutions?
Yes, leave is granted. Thank you, Councilmember Brooks. The chair also recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also, too, have to leave on official business, and so would like to be recorded as aye on all bills and resolutions.
Leave is granted. Thank you very much. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240769?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of nineteen hundred East Lehigh Avenue, located in the First Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter sixteen dash seven hundred of the Philadelphia Code introduced by Councilmember Squilla.
The chair recognizes the gentleman from South Philadelphia, Councilmember Squilla, for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240769.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that Resolution Number 240769 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240770?
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to twenty-one thirty-four through thirty-six East Clearfield Street in the First Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section sixteen dash four oh five of the Philadelphia Code.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Squilla for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240770?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that Resolution Number 240770 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240771?
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to twenty-two forty-eight Ruffner Street in the Eighth Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section sixteen dash four oh five of the Philadelphia Code introduced by Councilmember Bass.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240771.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that Resolution Number 240771 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240772?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of fifteen thirty-two West Laton Street, located in the Eighth Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter sixteen dash seven hundred of the Philadelphia Code introduced by Councilmember Bass.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240772.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that Resolution Number 240772 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240773?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of four-two-three dash twenty-seven, four-twenty-nine dash thirty-nine, including four-twenty-nine dash thirty-nine rear, East Ashmead Street, two-twenty-six to sixty-two seventy-eight three thirteen, AKA three thirteen through fifteen, East Springer Street, forty-nine East Earlham Street, forty-six thirty-five Germantown Avenue, thirty Good Street, fifty-six oh eight, fifty-six eighteen, fifty-six nineteen, fifty-six forty-two, fifty-six sixty-nine High School Street, forty-nine forty-six Kaiser Street, fifty-five fourteen, fifty-five fifteen, fifty-six forty-two Morton Street, sixty-six seventy-two, sixty-six seventy-four Musgrave Street, fifty-three East Pastoria Street, two oh seven East Penn Street, two forty-eight East Philhelena Street, forty-two and forty-four Rieger Street, thirty-five East Seymour Street, two-two-seven, two-six-one, two-six-three East Sharpneck Street, two-eighteen, three-two-six, three-four-two, three-four-three Shidaker Street, forty-nine fifty-one, forty-nine fifty-seven, forty-nine sixty-one, and forty-nine seventy-five Sheldon Street, one-eleven and one-twelve East Springer Street, and forty-nine twenty-five and fifty-two twenty-two Wakefield Street in the Eighth Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter sixteen dash seven hundred of the Philadelphia Code introduced by Councilmember Bass.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240773?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that Resolution Number 240773 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 240776?
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to fifty-eight oh three Knox Street in the Eighth Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section sixteen dash four oh five of the Philadelphia Code introduced by Councilmember Bass.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion regarding Resolution Number 240776?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It has been moved in property second that Resolution Number 240776 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's final passage calendar?
Resolution authorizing the Committee on Streets and Services to examine the city's response to illegal dumping, focusing on monitoring high activity areas, enforcement strategies, and the development of effective tools to combat this issue. Illegal dumping threatens the quality of life in our neighborhoods and communities, undermining our shared mission to transform Philadelphia into the safest, cleanest, and greenest big city in the nation, introduced by Councilmember Phillips.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President Johnson. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the next title of the resolution?
A resolution authorizing a joint hearing on the City Council Committee on Children and Youth and the Committee on Technology and Information Services on the use of electronic monitoring or global positioning systems, G P S, for youth involved with Philadelphia's juvenile justice system, introduced by Councilmember Phillips.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President Johnson. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
A resolution also naming the six hundred block of North Thirty-Four Street as C. V. Kimmons Way to honor the life and memory of C. V. Kimmons and his service to the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Gautier.
Thank you, Councilmember Gautier. I was one of his mentees, fresh out of college, so very, very well-deserving honor. The chair recognizes Councilmember Gautier for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution honoring and congratulating Cheney State College's nineteen eighty-two Lady Wolves Women's Basketball Team on their induction into the Women's Basketball Hall of Fame, introduced by Councilmember Isaiah Thomas on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to take a moment to vote aye on all bills and resolutions that I might have missed before this moment, and on your behalf, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution honoring and congratulating State Representative-elect Andre D. Carroll on the occasion of his special election victory in Pennsylvania House District two oh one, introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to State Rep. Carroll for joining us today, and I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution honoring and congratulating State Representative-elect Keith Harris on the occasion of his special election victory in Pennsylvania House District one ninety-five, introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion on the resolution.
Again, congratulations to one of our former colleagues here at City Council. Unfortunately, he was in Harrisburg today and couldn't be here, but with that same energy as if he was here, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold hearings to investigate the level and effectiveness of community engagement and outreach initiatives carried out by higher education institutions in Philadelphia that directly impact adjacent neighborhoods, introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution authorizing the Committee on the Environment to hold hearings to determine the need for a conservation district to be enacted within Philadelphia County, introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution honoring the anniversary of the enactment of the repeal of Don't Ask, Don't Tell and the honorable service of countless LGBTQ plus veterans and urging all veterans discharged due to this discriminatory policy to seek an upgraded discharge, enabling the LGBTQ plus veterans and their families to enjoy all the benefits they have earned, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Landau for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution recognizing the week of September twenty-third through September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four as diaper need awareness week in Philadelphia, and acknowledging the outstanding efforts of community-based organizations working to ensure that all children have the essential items needed to thrive and survive, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Landau for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution. I also have to leave for official council business and ask to be excused and to vote aye on all other matters.
Second. Wait, timeout.
All right. First, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second. It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. The chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau.
Thank you, Council President. May I please be excused, and I vote aye on all future matters?
All bills and resolutions?
All bills and resolutions.
You leave is granted. Thank you very much. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution recognizing Clotilde Jimenez for his representation of the City of Philadelphia on the global stage as a commissioned artist for the twenty twenty-four Paris Olympic Games, introduced by Councilmember Lozada.
The chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion on the resolution on behalf of Councilmember Lozada.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Lozada, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor were signified by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution recognizing Argenius Figueroa for his career in media and service to Philadelphia's Latino community, introduced by Councilmember Lozada. Latino community, introduced by Councilmember Lozada.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Captain Gilmore Richardson on behalf of Councilmember Lozada to make a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Lozada, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution recognizing Geisha Torres for her career in media and service to Philadelphia's Latino community, introduced by Councilmember Lozada.
The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson on behalf of Councilmember Lozada to make a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Lozada, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution recognizing and honoring Deputy Commissioner Pedro R. Rosario as the first Latino officer to hold the position of Deputy Commissioner in the 226-year history of law enforcement in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Lozada.
The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson on behalf of Councilmember Lozada to make a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Lozada, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Recognizing David Pina for his career in Philadelphia's restaurant industry and Philadelphia's Latino community, introduced by Councilmember Lozada.
The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson on behalf of Councilmember Lozada to make a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Lozada, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardiere.
Thank you, Council President. May I also be excused to attend to other council business, and I like to be recorded as aye on all bills and resolutions.
Leave as granted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Honoring and commending Dr. Jamil Telaz Lieberman, Dr. PHMPH, for her dedication to public health and service to the North Philadelphia community, introduced by Councilmember Lozada.
The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson to make a motion on behalf of Councilmember Lozada on a resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Lozada, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution recognizing and honoring prominent public servants during Hispanic Heritage Month who contribute to the health and economic wellness of Philadelphians, introduced by Councilmember Lozada.
The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson to make a motion on behalf of Councilmember Lozada on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Lozada, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Recognizing and honoring the Puerto Rican Day Parade on the occasion of its 60th anniversary within Philadelphia's Puerto Rican and Latino community, introduced by Councilmember Lozada.
The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson to make a motion on a resolution on behalf of Councilmember Lozada.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Lozada, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Recognizing and honoring remarkable Latino and Hispanic Philadelphia artists and journalists during Hispanic Heritage Month, introduced by Councilmember Lozada.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Captain Gilmore Richardson to make a motion on a resolution on behalf of Councilmember Lozada.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Lozada, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Recognizing and honoring Nitsa Waleska Sierra, Community Engagement Teaching Artist and Studio Coordinator at The Clay Studio, introduced by Councilmember Lozada.
The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson to make a motion on a resolution on behalf of Councilmember Lozada.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Lozada, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Recognizing and honoring Alba Martinez for her dedication to enhancing and uplifting the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Lozada.
The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson to make a motion on a resolution on behalf of Councilmember Lozada.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Lozada, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Honoring the life and legacy of internationally renowned jazz legend Barry Benny Golson, introduced by Councilmember Jeffrey Young.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Declaring September as National Sickle Cell Awareness Month, congratulating the Sickle Cell Disease Association of America, Philadelphia Delaware Valley Chapter, in recognition of their 26th Annual Walter E. Brandon Sickle Cell 5K Walk Run Fundraiser, named in memory of the late Reverend Walter E. Brandon, and commending the work of researchers and medical health professionals working every day to fight sickle cell disease and towards the ultimate goal of a universal cure, introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Captain Gilmore Richardson to make a motion on a resolution on behalf of Councilmember Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Brooks, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and celebrating Jocelyn Wims, activist, gospel singer, and public servant on the occasion of her birthday, introduced by Councilmember Harity.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Harity to make a motion on a resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution, Council President.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a res- I'm sorry.
Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
And a resolution recognizing Local 692 for their victory in the 2024 Pennsylvania Pipe Trades Tournament, introduced by Councilmember Harity.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Harity for a motion on a resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution, Council President.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Recognizing September 13th to the 27th, 2024, as Welcoming Week 2024 in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Ahmad.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Ahmad for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Recognizing Philadelphia as the host city for the TED Democracy Fireside Chats, a pioneering event series from TED, and Visit Philadelphia that engages national thought leaders in critical discussions on evolving role of democracy in our society, leading up to America's 250th anniversary, introduced by Councilmember Ahmad.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Ahmad for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
Recognizing September 17th, 2024, as Mid-Autumn Festival and celebrating the cultural and historical significance of Philadelphia's Chinatown, introduced by Councilmember Ahmad.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Recognizing September 2024 as Infant Mortality Awareness Month and highlighting the ongoing disparities in maternal and infant health in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Ahmad.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It has been moved in property second that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
There are no more resolutions in my possession, Council President.
That completes our calendar for today. Before we go into any speeches, I just want to acknowledge the young people who came down here to testify regarding the climate change resolution. They're still here. Let's give them a round of applause. A lot of us, a lot of us, it's not all of us inside this room started as young activists advocating in this body of democracy, coming down here being disruptors, but fighting for a cause which led us to our path. I think about the young Curtis Jones and Chaka Fatah and how they got their start. And so I just want to acknowledge the young people who have come down, who very well in the future may be sitting inside this very same room advocating around climate change policy. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Are there any speeches on behalf of the majority? Okay, he getting smart. Councilmember Phillips?
Just a brief announcement on behalf of your office as well as our office on Property Tax Relief Workshop this coming Monday, September 30th, 2024, from a 68 PM in 9th District at Finley Recreation Center. Eligible property owners can save money on real estate taxes. You're going to get in-person assistance to determine which program is right for you. So we look forward to seeing everybody on Monday, September 30th, at Finley Rec from 68. Myself and Council President is hosting a Property Tax Relief Workshop. So come on out, folks.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Council President, colleagues, thank you. I would just like for Jocelyn to stand up for a minute so we can give her a little round of applause. Anybody?
Everybody know Jocelyn.
So, yeah, that's right, Winfield. Any, anyone that is elected or an activist or goes to church should be familiar with Jocelyn. She is always volunteering for everything that comes down, from being a volunteer at her church to volunteering on campaigns to actually handing out the programs at Sunday Mass, you know, and singing in the choir. And, you know, again, we should honor people when they're here, and I could never thank this sister enough for what she actually did for me, running around on the ground when I was running. So thank you, Jocelyn.
We appreciate you, Jocelyn. You do be out there hustling. I ain't know whose staff you was on down here. Keep up the good work, Jocelyn. Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to also mention that in the 8th Council District, we also are doing a workshop on property tax relief with your office this coming Tuesday, October 1st, 6:00 to 7:30 PM, at Triumph Baptist Church, which is at 1648 West Hunting Park Avenue, which is Hunting Park and Germantown Avenue. So we want folks to come out, get resources, come meet folks at the resource tables with different agencies. We had a, an event last Tuesday at Lutheran Theological Seminary in Mount Airy, and we had a great turnout. We had the Department of Revenue, we had Community Legal Services, we had the Register of Will's Office and others, and it was really great turnout. So we want folks to come out, take advantage of these services, and if you're worried or concerned at all about your real estate taxes, you really should come. So thank you, Mr. President, for your partnership on this matter, and look forward to seeing everyone on Tuesday.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the housekeeping side, we at, in the 4th District, will be hosting our 30th Annual Food Truck Festival at 54th and Burke Street. It is free. There is boxing, there is music, there is double dutch, and I challenge my colleagues to remember those days and come out. There's a Dunk Tank, and the realest podcast ever. We'll be doing a podcast out there talking about current events. Come on out and have a good time. There'll be 20 food trucks, even vegan. We did that just for you. So come out and enjoy. On Tuesday, we will be hosting a nonpartisan, nonpartisan watch party at the Container Village from 6:00 to 9:00-ish, whenever they get done, but that's also free. Food, fun. We have Keith from up the block, the comedian who does live interventions on, you know, hilarious political satire. So it's fun. And gourmet popcorn, red and blue, whichever you choose. So on a serier note, though, we were out in Chicago together, and again, I was challenged by State Representative Morgan Seifis because of my opinion, sororities and other women's groups are running circles around black men, in particular, the brothers from the barbershop. And so the challenge was, if you think we're moving too fast and leaving you behind, figure out an agenda and keep up. Challenge made, challenge accepted. So in my research, I was also in Jeffrey Young's district at OIC's mall, and I ran into a young man on the way out who knew I was an elected official, and he was one of those barbershop guys that really isn't engaged, really feels left behind, really feels not a part of whatever the prosperity aspects going forward for people. But what I discovered in talking to some of my staff who come from rural Pennsylvania, there's a lot in common there. When a factory closes, they feel left behind. And is this for me, my future? And where do I fit in? So I went and talked to the guy, and I found out he lives right across the street, literally, from Temple, in the projects. And he said to me, every day he watches students, he lives in the shadow of opportunity, the shadow of opportunity. And so he watches young people deserving students go in and out of class, matriculate through the class, and wind up with degrees, jobs, and a future. In his mind, he's being left behind. Out of the 19,000 students in the freshman class in all of the universities this year, only 12% come from Philly. Out of that 12%, how many of them are poor? How many of them are African-American? How many of them are males like this man? He doesn't get a job there. He doesn't get a scholarship from there. There's no care packages coming to there. There's only watching and living in the shadow of opportunity as it passes him by. So we have to engage with this resolution introduced today. There's some people getting it right. There's some universities that get it right. I would point to, again, in your district, Member Young, Community College. Their connectivity to the surrounding community and people within the working and poorer classes is exemplary. They have co-classes that they offer in different schools. They, in their West Philadelphia auto shop, more kids come through there and wind up working for the City of Philadelphia than any other program in the city combined. The mayor talks about, and I'm looking forward to, a municipal university where they teach young people how to get jobs in the streets department, in the gas works, on the electric poles. They have a real pathway to those opportunities that seem to be passing them by at the university. But it's not just Temple. You can go to La Salle, what is it, Morton Homes, right around the corner. There's a kid sitting on the steps right now, watching the students pass them by. University Penn, that's down the bottom, and they don't know how to figure out how to get up top. So what I want to do with this hearing is just say, what are the best practices that community and others are doing? And what are some of the universities that might need a little help to figure it out? And let's get them, take them, take one from each other to knit a cloth so that our young people aren't disen- disenchanted about the process. This kid said, I'm not even voting. It ain't for me. We got to change that narrative. We got to turn them around by showing them that pathway of opportunity to a successful life, a life worth living. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Good job, Councilman Jones. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, I want to thank my colleagues today for allowing me a little bit more time on the presentation today with Erica Alexander. I just think that she is someone who deserves that. But it wasn't necessarily just for Erica Alexander. Like, for me, that was to show the greatness of folks who come from our city, folks, the girls' high graduates that I know, like the Vice President of Community Education at Ensemble, Danielle Allen, Executive Director of Philip Bundits, Lori Jones, Executive Director and Chief Counsel for the State Appropriations Committee, Courtney Richardson, Majority Leader Captain Gilmore Richardson. These are names of women who are from our city, who do great things for our city, who continue to show what we have to offer. So it was for those folks. Mr. President, I want to thank you as well for partnering with me at a, the tax, property tax assessment workshop in Center City with CCRA. at a, the, the tax, property tax assessment workshop in Center City with C C R A. You know, we got some great information out to those folks in the communities. And I know every council, particularly District Council members are going out throughout their districts letting folks know what programs exist for them. There's a program out there for you. If you own a property in the city of Philadelphia, there is a program out there for you that can provide some relief on your property taxes. Special deadlines are coming up. October seventh is the deadline to file for the appeal. I encourage everyone to file an appeal if you, if you believe that your assessment is inaccurate. October seventh is the deadline to file an appeal. It is free. Speaking of housing, on this Saturday, there is the PHDC Housing Fair in North Philadelphia at Fifteenth and Montgomery where there'll be folks talking about affordable housing opportunities, mortgage opportunities, and everything housing will be at this fair on Saturday. If you can attend Fifteenth and Montgomery on Temple University Campus, please show up. Also on Saturday, my office will be doing a community cleanup right near Temple University between Burke Street and Diamond Street from Sixteenth to Twentieth in the Thirty-second Ward. If you're available to come volunteer, please come volunteer. We'll be out there at eight-thirty A M. at Sixteenth and Burks. There's also tomorrow a teen takeover at Mandarin Recreation Center beginning at six P M. to ten P M. It is a safe space for teenagers from tomorrow and throughout the month of October, every single Friday. This is a place where teenagers in North Philadelphia can go to feel safe, to have activities. Please utilize Mandarin Rec Center at Thirty-third and Diamond on, on Fridays between six and ten P M. This last weekend, I went to the Janaza of Alasia Smith. She was a thirteen-year-old who was shot in the chest and killed in North Philadelphia. And I was heartbroken while I was there. I went in between the lovely service of our Chair Appropriations Committees, Jordan Harris, his wife. I had to step out to go to this Janaza. But I was brought to tears literally outside because there were kids outside. These were little kids, twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year-old children crying, hurting, full of trauma because one of their friends, one of their loved ones, a thirteen-year-old girl, was shot and killed. And just looking around, the folks that are out there, it's folks who look just like me, right? Why is it, again, that our communities are the only communities that have to continuously experience this trauma of gun violence? And for the life of me, I'm, I'm trying to figure that out and trying to figure out solutions to this. So, Mr. President, as I continue to work day in and day out in this body, we're going to be putting forth, you know, programs and, you know, shouting, shouting positive places like the Teen Space at Mandarin Rec Center on Fridays for teenagers to go to feel safe. Because we should not be the only folks that have to, that, that go through this. Why are we going through this day in and day out? And so that's, you know, that, that's the core of why I'm here, to figure out that issue, to find solutions to that particular issue. And on a little personal note to the folks who are testifying, there are a lot of folks of us who don't have to take scepter to see homelessness, drug use, and poverty because it's in the neighborhoods that we live in. So I just want to put that out there as well. And, Mr. President, I also want to thank and congratulate, thank Councilmember Thomas for pulling forth the resolution honoring Andre and Keith. I look forward to working with both of them. Keith represents the one hundred ninety-fifth district, which encompass, which his district encompasses my district as well. And also the resolution we put forth today. Thank my colleagues, honoring Benny Gosin, a North Philadelphia native. For those who don't know, he wrote scores for M A S H, Missing and Possible, The Partridge Family, and other movie shows. One of the world-renowned jazz artists that come from our city. He was friends with, his friends was John Coltrane, right, and other like. So I want to honor his family, honor his memory, his legacy, the legacy of music that comes from this city. We are a musical city, and we need to honor the history and legacy of that. And thank you so much, Mr. President, for your time today.
You're welcome. The Chair recognizes Councilman Isaiah Thomas.
Good afternoon, Council President. A couple of things real quick. First, after council today, Mirror Arts would like to invite all members to Room four ninety-one for some framed photos of murals for every office. So if there's an opportunity to help improve the beautiful offices that already exist as it relates to council members, I've been to all your offices, they're amazing. There's a quick gift there for council members from Mirror Arts. I want to say thank you to Mirror Arts for participating in that initiative. Also want to take a moment to thank B E T. For those who don't know, my office worked with Vincent, Senator Vincent Hughes's office and a number of organizations to put on a Get Out the Vote concert as well as a panel discussion focused on encouraging black men to get out the vote. So we appreciate B E T for coming to Philadelphia and all the local artists who were able to perform at the Met. It was a phenomenal event. We had lots of young people. And again, the goal is to push and encourage as many people as possible to participate in this November's election. In that same spirit, on Tuesday, we will be working with Councilmember Curtis Jones, Councilmember Kendra Brooks, and a few other elected officials, Senator Hughes, as well as State Rep. Ronnie Green, and the Sixth Man Center and a few other organizations to put together another Get Out the Vote initiative that'll take place from five to eight, four thousand two hundred, Whistahickon Avenue. And again, the goal is to provide free resources, services, and programs to really push citizens across the city of Philadelphia to vote. And this effort on Tuesday is focused on young people. I also want to take a moment to thank, because we haven't been in council since then, all of the people who partnered with our office to put together what I would like to call an historic gaming event that we did on September fourteenth. We had a panel discussion at that event, and it was news presented to me, colleagues, that the gaming industry generates more revenue in a year than the music industry and the movie industry combined. Billions of dollars are being accumulated by the gaming industry, and it is my focus, along with my colleagues on City Council, to make Philadelphia the home for gaming. When you think about other industries and where you travel across the country to be able to, to be able to have your talents mature, we want people all across the country to come to Philadelphia for gaming. We already have a phenomenal annual event that we do every year. We also thank Drexel University. For those who don't know, Drexel has one of the best gaming programs in the entire country as it relates to degrees that young people can get. And we are already on the cusp of doing it. So the work will continue. There'll be more things coming out of my office specifically around gaming, and we're going to push to make Philadelphia the home city in the entire country for the gaming industry and the gaming business. So thank you all for your support with that initiative. And I definitely have to give a shout out to my chief of staff, Don Miller, who's really the gaming connoisseur as it relates to the work that we're doing. Last but not least, I have to take a moment to thank, well, I want to start actually by thanking former Councilmember Helen Gimm. For those who don't know, about two years ago, former Councilmember Helen Gimm and I had a meeting as she was looking to depart City Council. And she talked to me about some of the issues that we were facing in the prison. And she had began working on a, a Philadelphia Prison's Community Oversight Board, and the work wasn't complete by the time she was prepared to step away from this body. And so my team decided to take on this huge project, which we've been working on for two years in collaboration with the Defender's Office, the Prison Society, the District Attorney, Amistad Law Center, and a coalition of thirty-six other groups who recognize the problems that we have with the prisons here in the city of Philadelphia. I also want to take a moment to thank Mayor Parker and her entire administration. Prior to the bill being even introduced, we've had multiple meetings with the administration about the issues that are taking place in the prisons. And let's be honest, these issues existed long before our current mayor became the mayor, before our current administration was in place. And I appreciate their commitment to working with this legislative body to try our best to rectify these issues as it relates to the concerns for both the prisoners as well as the people who work in the prisons. I want to thank all of my colleagues on City Council for cosponsoring this bill, including you, Council President. We have sixteen cosponsors for this particular legislation, which communicates to me the sense of urgency around the issues that we're facing in the prison and the need to see some type of change. I especially want to thank Councilmember Mike Driscoll because this issue is flat out in his district. And before even coming to City Council, he's been advocating and fighting for change as a state legislator. And I also want to thank Councilmember Nicholas Arorick and his staff for working closely with my staff over the last three months to get this bill in the final stage. And we're looking forward to engaging the administration as well as the advocates and all parties and stakeholders who truly care about what's going on to figure out what is the happy compromise as it relates to making sure that we have the proper oversight for our prisons and ensuring that all people who enter and leave those facilities are safe. During my first term and into my second term in City Council, we've seen and heard some of the most horrific stories that I personally will never forget as it relates to things that have happened in the prison. So I'm excited to know that there's an appetite to see some type of change, and we're looking forward to working with a number of different stakeholders to bring about that change. I think that's it for me, Council President. Thank you for the opportunity and colleagues. I apologize for being long-winded so late in the afternoon. You know, that's not me. But I think that we had some important announcements, and this is possibly historic legislation that can really change how our prisons are essentially watched over. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ahmad.
Thank you, Council President. And echoing what my colleagues have said about our youth in our city and what they are facing, I want to start at the beginning. And today I introduced a resolution recognizing September two thousand and twenty-four as Infant Mortality Awareness Month. This is the beginning for, for our residents in Philadelphia when they're born. And the infant mortality rate in Philadelphia is alarmingly high with eight-point-four deaths per thousand live births compared to the national average, five-point-eight deaths per one thousand live births, which is also unacceptable. Both of these numbers are unacceptable, and these are rates are even higher for black and brown infants. While bringing awareness to this issue, it is crucial. My office also recognizes the need for structural change. We have been continuing, continuing our work to address the maternal and infant mortality crisis and implicit bias in Philadelphia throughout collective action and conversations with crucial stakeholders and ultimately legislation. We must all commit to addressing the underlying social determinants of health and supporting mothers, birthing people, and children postpartum. And I thank all my colleagues for sharing this vision for Philadelphia's families. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Nina. And as always, members, great job, hard work, Mr. Thomas and Nina and Jeffrey Young and Kathy and Phillips and Harity. Everyone who's put forth legislation today to move our great city of Philadelphia forward. At this particular time, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Council President. I think this is an important issue for all of us in our city. On Tuesday, October first, the Streets and Services Committee along with the Public Safety Committee will be holding a hearing on illegal street racing and also the denial of block party permits in our communities. So if anyone of the public wishes to testify on those two matters, please come down to City Hall, Room four hundred, ten A M. on Tuesday. Thank you, Mr. President.
Illegal street racing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for motion to adjourn.
Council President, real quick before I make the motion. Today, we recognize, I know, I'm killing y'all, I'm killing y'all.
Tom, Tom.
I know, but today, today, real quick, Council President, we recognize a number of organizations for the work that they do with infants and diapers. And I forgot to recognize Ms. Teresa Duncan, who has sat here for about four, five hours listening to the entire session. Ms. Duncan is, she is with the Center for Leadership, and she comes to every event that we do and provides free resources to mothers and children. And this resolution today that was introduced by Councilmember Rue Landau celebrates multiple organizations, but I, I had to, I'm sorry, Council President. Just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to Teresa specifically for all the work that she does.
Thank you, Teresa.
And let her know we appreciate it.
Good job.
With that being said, Council President, I make a motion that City Council stands adjourned until Thursday, October tenth, ten A M. property.
It has been moved in property second that Council stays adjourned until Thursday, October the tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at ten A M. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. The motion carries. Thank you very much.